The Wednesday, November 18th, 2020 Town Hall Meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cunelli, and myself, Mrs. Vitale. And we are joined tonight by Select Woman Lefkowitz, who has graciously agreed to be our moderator. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. And Ms. Lefkowitz, could you lead us on the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight for the Board of Education's first virtual Town Hall. I'm going to start with just a disclaimer. We don't know how this is going to go in terms of the technology, but we're going to give it a try. We're really happy that everybody could join us and call in. I'd like to thank Mr. Asa for serving as the tech wizard, along with Marco from Central Office, to get this meeting up and running. I appreciate the help on this. As I said, we are joined tonight by Nancy Lefkowitz, who serves on the Board of Selectmen. She is also a past RTM member of the RTM and a co-chair of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force for the town of Fairfield. These Town Hall meetings are held twice a year by the Board of Education. They came out of the work of the Communications Committee a couple of years ago. And it's just an informal opportunity for the public and the Board to have a reciprocal dialogue. During our regular meetings, the public comment is usually limited. There is not a back and forth. So I'm hoping that tonight there'll just be a nice opportunity for us to connect. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lefkowitz for some opening remarks. I again thank her for joining us. Every one of these meetings, we try to invite a member from one of the other Town Boards to participate. So I appreciate her adding another meeting schedule, another meeting to her very busy schedule. So Ms. Lefkowitz, the floor is yours.
Well, I thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for this opportunity to put on clothes other than something made with elastic. So that's first and foremost. And I thank my friends on the Board of Education for inviting me tonight. And while it's true, I serve in an elected capacity here, I'm really tonight here as a friend, a friend to the Board of Education, as a resident, and as a working mom of three, two of whom are in the school system here and one with an IEP. So for me, this is really an important opportunity for all of us to really hear from, to have the opportunity to hear from residents, to ask questions, to express points of view that really are in the purview. What's being covered tonight are matters that are in the purview of the Board of Education, issues of policy, budget, and facilities. This is a really great opportunity for all of us, really, the Board of Ed and all of us as residents, to listen to one another. So logistically, we ask that you raise your hand with the icon that is on the bar under the Participants. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And really, this is so that we can be fair and so that we're not here, we into the late hours of the morning. And to my friends on the Board of Education, I ask that you are also mindful of your comments. And to both participants in the community and to the Board of Ed, if something's already been said, we do want to hear from everybody, but maybe you can tailor your remarks to keep that in mind so that we can hear from everybody. And similarly, to the members of the Board of Ed, if one of your colleagues has answered a question that's similar and you feel compelled still to speak, then a simple "I agree with my colleague" and so on. And just a reminder, a couple of things, that we are encouraging civil dialogue. This is a great opportunity, and I hope that we all look at it in that light. And something that we've been asked of a lot is, I'm going to ask you again tonight, we urge your patience and understanding. This is the first time we've done this, that the Board of Ed has done this kind of virtual Town Hall. I have every confidence this will go smoothly. But we do thank you in advance for your patience and understanding if something is a little out of whack. But I think that we are off to a great start. And thank you to Marco and Mr. Asa for facilitating the smooth transition. And so with that, I turn it over to all of you and to you, Mr. Asa, to call on the participants.
Thank you, thank you. And just for the public, some of you have heard this. But what we are going to do is call on you by the hand raise feature. So if you are interested in speaking tonight, could you please open your Participants box, either on your mobile device or on your laptop or computer? Once you're in Participants, you can scroll to find your name. And if you hover over your name, there should be the ability to press a hand, which will raise your hand. So to start off really quick, can we just have everyone that is interested in speaking tonight on any topic do a quick hand raise? I will lower everybody. We're not going to call on everybody right away. But anyone interested, just so we can kind of get a gauge of anyone who would like to speak to the Board tonight, to please hover over your name in the Participants box and raise your hand. I'm starting to see them come in. That's good. I only have a couple. We have 65 people on, so I'm sure there's more than two. If you are on a mobile device, there is a way to do it. Christine, if you wouldn't mind just mentioning how you did it from your phone the other day? I believe it was at the bottom. If you tapped it, an option came up, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it showed up on the bottom of my phone just to raise hand. If you hover at the bottom, it was actually easier on my phone than on the Dialogue Box. If, you know, if for some reason...
What we're going to do is, I'm going to go with hands. So I'm going to lower everybody's hands right now. Thank you for raising your hands. And let's go ahead. And those who want to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand now. And I will call on you and turn it over. First, we have Tina Brown. I have sent you an unmute request. You should be able to accept. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Tina Brown, 340 Merwin's Lane, Fairfield. So I have two questions. Should I ask them at the same time or separately?
Why don't you start with your complete questions? And we can just go ahead, ask both, and then we can...
Okay. So both of them pertain to comments that I've heard when listening to the Board meetings. So I've heard in the meetings from parents and a few Board of Ed meetings, the assertions that teachers are failing students. I haven't heard any evidence go with the statement. But things I know and have evidence of is that my colleagues and I are working as hard and intelligently as we can to help our students. So the question is, how is it helping the hardworking, stressed-out people to come to work and do the right thing every day for you to declare that we're failing? How does that help us move to the result you want? Because I can tell you that hearing that from you makes many hardworking, devoted teachers wonder why we're giving so much. My second question is, I also hear, not from the Board members, but actually from Mr. Cummings, we're waiting on more guidance from the state. So I looked up the guidance from the state. And it said, "In collaboration with local health department superintendent, consider more distance learning when positive cases are above 25 per 100,000." So I looked up what Fairfield was. And for the weeks 1025 to 1107, Fairfield was 35.6 per 100,000. And for the time 115 to 1118, Fairfield is 53.3 per 100,000. So my question is simply, when it's stated we're waiting for guidance from the state, what guidance from the state is the district waiting for?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I think if we could just first comment as Board members on the first comments about teachers failing the students. And then if we could, the second question, second. Ms. Pitco?
Hi, Mrs. Brown. You just left my screen. I just saw you. I want to start off with anything that I've said at the table. First, I'm a teacher, and I will say this is the hardest I've ever worked in my entire life. In fact, while I was sitting here waiting, I was typing back to my students questions they had done today. And I just feel like I'm working 24 hours a day. What I have said at the Board table is that they need to really utilize this SRBI process. One, because if students are struggling and we're getting these emails that kids are struggling, then the school district needs to identify them and help them. Because not everybody can sit behind a computer and do this. Some people need those social emotional skills. Some people need that extra just from the classroom. And that's what I've been saying at the table. I've also said that if the state goals were student engagement and social emotional learning, then our attendance is showing that we're not doing enough to get the students to engage. I'm not saying that's any one teacher. I'm seeing it myself. I'm in my classes, and not all of my students are showing up online. And I'm reaching out to them, and I'm trying. And there's got to be more that we can do to help them. As far as the social emotional learning, I can only speak to the district that I work in. I was never trained in social emotional learning. I don't know specifically how to help them. So I keep reaching out, trying, "Give me more tools as a teacher." And that's what I kept saying to Rab Man Kusi is, "What are you doing to help them?" So I'm going to stick to the first question, and I know that'll give everybody a chance to answer that.
Thank you, Ms. Pitco. Would anyone else on the Board like to comment on Ms. Brown's first question? Ms. Rotelli?
Hi, and thank you, Ms. Brown, for your question. I have said at the Board table that we were failing students. Not, you know, I came off that meeting wondering if I could have worded things better. Because I think what, I've said a couple of times, there's a discrepancy, right, between what I hear from parents and staff. And especially in our reopening committee meeting, especially in the beginning, there was this sort of sense that everything was going great in schools, and that was not at all the feedback we're getting from the parents. In fact, we're getting really some eye-opening emails about just how hard this has been on children, how difficult this has been, how the withdrawing, the isolation, the depression, the hating school, former, you know, A students not engaging now. And I don't know that that's necessarily a reflection of all teachers. It certainly isn't. I can't even imagine how hard this job is right now. But it doesn't seem to be connecting with the schools. And I have said later on, and I continue to tell people who email the Board, to reach out to their schools and reach out to their teachers. Because we can say it at the Board table, but unless the schools are hearing about it, like, there's no way of us trying to fix something we don't know about. And that's all we're trying to do, is really identify what our weaknesses are and fix it. But I mean, I know that we have teachers going above and beyond doing all sorts of things to try and keep our kids engaged. And I have reached out personally to those in my own team to thank them. But there is some discrepancies across schools, across grades, on what the model is supposed to be looking like for certain grades and on hybrid days and non-hybrid days and on Wednesdays and what that looks like. And it has not been across the board, even for children in the district. I'll let anybody else hop on or talk about the guidance.
Thank you. Ms. Max and Cunelli?
Yeah, I would say I have never heard the phrase at the Board table, and feel free to give me a timestamp for where I'm wrong. I've never heard anybody say that the teachers have failed students. What I think there have been several allusions to is the system has failed students. That the system, I have no question that teachers are working very hard. Now we need them working smarter. But I can't imagine working in that non-live environment in our secondary schools, middle schools and high schools, of planning two completely different lessons in a single day, of live to some kids and then the work that got sent home to the kids who were remote on that day. And now by switching over to live, we're looking to see a whole different level of engagement. And that's a change in the system. The teachers, of course, are also being asked to do something different as well, which, as someone who's working in a system like that, I am hoping that while the teachers are still going to be tired, that they're ultimately going to find more productive and more granting, more allowing of a continuous field to their curriculum, that they are progressing steadily, albeit somewhat more slowly, on a daily instructional basis. So again, I would personally push back on the first part of your question that I don't think we have said, or there have been allusions to teachers failing, but that the system that was set up across the district was not working. And thus, it was failing for kids. To the second part, I've been very open at the Board table that until they start showing that transmission is happening in schools, that what's happening in the community, in fact, right now, the schools are the safest places, safest place our kids can be because of the mitigation strategies that we have in place, because of the fabulous compliance that is being reported, that those numbers don't, I don't find them daunting at all. When we reach a point of not having the staff in our buildings, that's a whole different safety issue. And that's maybe when we're going to have to contemplate this. But right now, the transmission is not happening in the schools. Therefore, closing the schools, to me, would not be, in my opinion, would not be the advisable course of action.
Are there other members of the Board that want to address the first part of the question? And then we can circle back, Ms. Pitco or Ms. Rotelli, if you wanted to comment on the second. But Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm going to echo, I think, really, what Ms. Max and Cunelli said in terms of, not even the system, but I think that right now, it even goes beyond school districts. I think that we as, not a community, but as a country, when you look at some other countries in Europe in terms of prioritizing education, you know, it's been very difficult, you know, to, we want our kids in school. We know how hard teachers are working. Teachers are not failing their students. You know, they are really going above and beyond. And I can't imagine just, you know, the worry about delivering education and just worrying about the social emotional and worrying about what's going on at home. So let me start just by thanking you for your work and thanking your colleagues. I think it's very, you know, school districts across the world are really faced with a very difficult challenge. Like, this is new for everybody. And many people are making decisions that they've never had to make before and may or may not have the background to make them and are sort of learning as they're going along and being called on to be flexible and to adapt to changing information about a novel virus. I wish it was cleaner all the way around for the teachers, for administration, for the Boards of Education, for Town Leadership. Because I just see a lot of people at all levels really working very hard for our town and for our kids. And as Ms. Rotelli said, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback from parents that their kids are struggling, their families are struggling. It's hard on everyone. And as Board members, we feel a real responsibility, not only to our students and to our families, but also to staff. So I apologize if the tone of our meetings at times has made staff feel underappreciated or that we were placing this all on you. That was never my intent, and I don't think it was the intent of the Board.
Thank you.
In terms of the second question, I will kind of address that. More guidance from the state. There's been a lot of questions, you know, we, school districts have been given Addendum Four as the health guidance to follow. When it first came out in August, it was more, it seemed like there were guide, you know, under 10 in-person learning, between 10 and 25 cases per 100,000 population hybrid. Above 25, you should be in remote learning. Then, when towns started popping up on the red alert system, they revised that guidance to make it more of a sliding scale. And it was never meant to be about one number. You were supposed to look at the rate of transmission in the community, look at your school district and your ability to put forth those mitigation measures like mask wearing and social distancing. And if, you know, if the rate of transmission goes up in the community, then you need to make sure that those other mitigation factors are really strong. There's been a lot of conversations with the superintendent in terms of trend. You know, how, right now, we've been trending up. How long will we need to be trending down in order to see a change in the instructional model? Right now, you're right, the numbers based on Addendum Four have us favoring more remote learning. But that, some of the other information coming out from the state, you know, the governor thinks put something out today, looking at other school districts that are not seeing transmission within the schools. It seems that keeping kids in school, if at all possible, really is desirable. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you.
If different information comes out from the state, you know, unfortunately, we'll have to react to that.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Unless someone on the Board has a last quick comment, I think we can move on to the next question. And just a reminder, if we could each keep to one question, and if we have time, we can circle back to more. But just in an effort to make sure everyone gets heard. And thank you, Ms. Brown, for your questions. I really appreciate it. Our next question asker or comment maker, Mr. Asa?
Back to the, back to the public, for those who have joined since we last shared. In the Participants queue, you are able to hover over your own name and raise your hand. If you're on a mobile device, I believe there's three dots at the bottom. You can click on to raise your hand. There were a few people when we did a test that raised their hand. So I am looking for the next person to raise their hand in the virtual queue in the Participants box. And we will call on you. I know with 95 people on here, there's bound to be people that want to speak. So...
We have also, you'll notice there is no chat function for this. And the point is to make sure that we're all listening to one another and have the opportunity to be heard. So we encourage callers and video participants to, this is a really wonderful opportunity. So we encourage you to raise your virtual hand.
And while we're waiting for that, just in case anybody's having trouble raising their virtual hand, I'm going to pan the cameras. Okay, Chris Benedetto, they're raising their hand. So hang on one second. I'm going to unmute you.
And Chris, please tell us who you are joined by, unless that person is sneaking away.
Oh, hi. This is my wife.
If you could...
Come back, come back.
And name and street address, please.
Oh, Bradley Street. So I'm going to make a statement first, and then I'm going to follow it up with a question. It's a very quick statement. I think it's very, the misconception is that everyone is after the teachers and everyone's angry at the teachers. And I don't think that's the case all around, including on the Board, right? This is obviously a very unique situation. And we all want, I would hope, that we all want the same outcome. Everyone here is worried about their children, and we want to make sure that they're getting the proper education. So I have a very simple question, which I feel has never really been answered. It's just been kind of bounced around. As of this, as of today, the 18th of November, what's the plan? What is, what is the actual plan? What do we need to do in order to get the ball moving towards full time? And I want to make it very clear, anyone that I'm involved with or I represent, you know, through our whole thing that we've got going on here, it's not about going back tomorrow. We just want to know and understand that there's a clear plan and there's a date to go back. Like, people have said just a little while ago, the governor himself has said that schools are the safest place for children to be right now. I have, my son is a sped student. I can tell you right now that he comes home, he checks off all the boxes he possibly can, and he taps out. He's on YouTube. You know, my wife and I both work. We can't be all over him every second of the day. And this is not, you know, his teachers are amazing. They're phenomenal. They're doing everything they possibly can for him to be successful. But I worry that he's not learning, he's just checking the boxes off. So I really want to understand what the plan is and, you know, what we can do as parents to help, you know, get the ball rolling as well.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Ms. Jacobson, I saw your hand. Would you like to answer Mr. Benedetto's question about the plan moving forward?
Hi, this is Jen Jacobson. Thanks so much for your question. So I know there's been a lot of feeling in the community that there hasn't been a plan, so to speak. So there is a plan, a reopening plan. There was always the original reopening plan. And then moving forward, as, you know, things progressed and things changed, the reopening committee has been working on a plan. And just recently, I had requested that that be posted, and that is available on the website at this time. And it is very clear that from logistics to technology needs, to our facility needs, to staff training needs are all laid out there, so you can see that. There are due dates on that plan as of this point. I know you asked about a date to reopen full time, so to speak. And I think that we have tried, and I understand that, wanting to have a date. But as the Chair previously stated, and I'm sure others who have listened to our meetings, to just pick an arbitrary date and then have it maybe come and not happen wouldn't be particularly helpful either. So the point is, right now, to move on the plan, make sure everything's in place. And there's been a lot of progress, I have to say.
So what has been in progress, if you don't mind me asking?
Oh, just making sure the arrow of materials, the technology has been ordered. It's been delivered, it's getting sent out to the districts, the Plexiglas, the extra cleaning supplies, the vent systems, the filters in the systems, the PD that we've been giving to the staff in order to integrate more technology so they can do more live streaming. I mean, that's a very long list. So if you, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt you, and I apologize.
Okay.
With all due respect, we have been in this situation since the 12th of March or the 11th of March or whatever it has, right? So we're going on nine months of literally the same exact pattern that we've had since March. That's unacceptable.
What do you mean, the same pattern?
Well, we're, with the exception for the hybrid model where our kids go to school for two hours, we're still, they're still learning on a computer. I mean, my son is staring at a computer all day long, right? He has ADHD. It's very hard and very difficult to him to keep it together. A lot of times, I have to dismiss my work to help my son so that he doesn't feel like a total failure. Because he's mentioned it to me a million times, okay? So we're going on nine months, and I hear you. I hear everything you're saying. It's a long list, it's difficult. I get it. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter to me. The outcome matters. So we need to understand what is the plan? So if we need Plexiglas, great, let's get Plexiglas. If we need, you know, the mask, great, we need to get the mask. I don't understand how we could have several other districts, Norwalk, for example...
Ms. Vitale might have some insight. I saw her hand raise. Forgive me.
No, that's okay. But all these schools who are in full time, we're Fairfield. I grew up in this town. I'm born and raised in Fairfield. We are known for our education system. And to me, this is the biggest embarrassment I have ever experienced as a resident of Fairfield, that we're so unprepared. We should be in school. This is destroying our children, not only academically, but also emotionally and mentally. The, I don't even want to know the numbers that are going to be, by the way, astronomical in terms of mental health, God forbid, suicide, and so on and so forth. And I don't want it to be one of those things where, God forbid, something happens to one of the children in our town, they do something drastic, and then all of a sudden, everyone's going to go, "Oh, we got to go back to school. We got to get into this. We got to do it. We got..."
Ms. Vitale, I saw your hand raised. If you would like to, and then Ms. Jacobson, I'll turn back to you for a follow-up comment.
Thank you. I know that it's very, you know, to look at other districts and want to compare them. But each district is different.
And we're Fairfield.
I understand, I understand that. But when you're looking at health and safety, which, you know, needs to be a priority right now during this pandemic, and being able to keep distance within the classroom, you know, whether or not Norwalk has a significant, I think it's close to 30% of their population is remote. They just have, they're just, they're just different. They have more room, they're able to put those safety mitigation in, in place. And I don't know if you've looked at their numbers. They have had a lot of, a lot of challenges in terms of when they do get a positive case in the school. And that's another piece of it.
But Ms. Vitale...
The superintendent made the decision... The superintendent made the decision to open with the hybrid. You know, we know a lot more now than we did then. We didn't necessarily know what transmission was going to look like. Thankfully, right now, we are not seeing, you know, cases have popped up here and there, but we have not seen the virus transmitting within the classroom, and that is very good news. That is why we are still in hybrid right now, we're not talking about going full remote, and still discussing ways of bringing kids back into school more. Um, but we, we need to appreciate that we are still dealing with a pandemic, and when you do get a positive case in a school, and when the virus is transmitting actively to the community, it's just, it's just more likely that you're going to get cases pop up in schools. We've been seeing it for weeks in Fairfield. One thing that we have, we have thankfully, we have kids in quarantine, but when you, when you practice that social distancing, when you get a positive case, you don't have to quarantine as many students. So some of these districts that have gone back fall, when they get a positive case, they've had to close schools for extended periods of times, entire cohorts have gone remote, um, you know, entire, you know, schools, two weeks at a time, and we thankfully have, have not had that. There's also staffing challenges, as you have positive cases, more, more teachers have to go out on quarantine, and that affects the ability to run a school district as well. Um, you know, as I said, we have been pretty, you know, we've had some limited school closings at Ludlow, and I think Holland Hill and Riverfield, but overall, we've been able to move forward and give some stability for our kids. In terms of the plan, as Ms. Jacobson said, you know, we, if the numbers were lower, we could have opened on November 9th.
On September 3rd.
Yeah, we could have opened, we, you know, we can't go back right now, we can't go back right now. Um, I don't want to take, I don't want to take the time going back, I think that we need to keep on going forward.
Over and over again. So with all due respect, I just want to take the opportunity to speak for myself and represent my family in my, in the residents of Fairfield.
Thank you very much for that. And Ms. Jacobson, I'll turn to you, and if there's no other comments after this, we're going to move on to the next caller. Um, Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just finish up with what, after what Christine said and said, that I think that if you had watched, I don't know if you watch all of our board meetings, but there have been many members of this board that in addition to advocating for all of our students have also pressed very heavily for special education kids, for our at-risk kids, for the kids who are struggling mentally, for everything that you said, including me, to be in consideration of the guidance from the state lacking in a lot of those metrics that we are now considering in order to keep us at this point, at least with as much as we can in person. So I don't think that it would be an accurate assessment for anyone on this call to say that anyone of this board have not very, um, vocally pressed to ensure that our kids that have special needs and IEPs and need ELL services, get them.
So thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna thank you, Mr. Benedetto, and if each time at the end of the call, we can circle back, but thank you very much. Um, Mr. Asa, can we turn to the next caller?
Yes, um, I do see, um, a hand, a virtual hand raised, but I also had a, a, a video hand raised from a Liz Moise. Um, so I am going to send you a, a request, don't worry, we've got a virtual hand up, I do see it.
Okay, so Liz, are you somewhere on the screen, or are you?
Oh, we can't hear you, Liz. You, you appear to be unmuted, but your microphone doesn't appear to be working. Hold on. Okay, Liz, what I'm just gonna recommend is maybe you, um, I'm gonna go to the next caller and come back to you, maybe if you want to disconnect and try and come back in, uh, whatever you have to do, I apologize, but we're able to see your lips moving, but not your voice.
I'm sorry, Liz, but try again, we'll come back to you.
Um, I have a Kristen Bellavender, uh, sending you a mute, an unmute request now.
Kristen, what is your question for the board, or your comments?
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
All right, thank you.
State your name and your address, please.
Okay, uh, Kristen Bellavender, 88 Home Fair Drive. Um, yes, I appreciate the time and the opportunity to, uh, not actually be there, but to talk with everyone tonight. Um, I guess I have a twofold question. Uh, I like the ability to be able to look at the reopening notes and watch the reopening committee meeting. Uh, these conversations, there's very limited attention to our secondary schools and their ability to reopen when the time comes. Uh, I'm particularly concerned with middle school, as this is a unique developmental time, and the discrepancy in the executive functioning skills, maturity and socialization needs differ greatly from a sixth grader to an eighth grader. Middle school students and staff seem to be an afterthought in this reopening plan from the get-go, and I'd like to know how we can approach planning for this age group for a more, from a more strategic point moving forward. Um, that said, I'd also like to know where we stand on getting rid of remote Wednesdays and rotating students in every other week. There's an abundance of information that supports that children belong in classrooms. We have an opportunity to expand these children's access to in-person learning, and we're not capitalizing on it. Um, I, one other, one other note, I know that it was just mentioned, uh, by one of the Board of Ed members, that Norwalk had a 30% remote, uh, buy-in, or people chose 30% remote. We actually never took that number for Fairfield, we don't actually have an operating number to work on, so I think that that would be something moving forward that would be beneficial as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, I see your hand, Ms. Vitale, is there someone we have not heard from on the board that would like to make a comment?
Ms. Leckwood, if my, if it, just for my other board members, I think I might be able to provide some information they may not have.
Please, go ahead.
Um, the, the superintendent has been working with staff to, um, reassess the current models. We are hoping to have that information within the next week or so, working on planning a special meeting the week of November 30th, um, appreciating that all of the instructional models need some revision. Um, the board met, has been very vocal about trying to regain that time on Wednesdays especially, um, really after the Director of Health came and shared that maybe the deep cleaning that was being done on Wednesdays may not be needed, um, to the same level. We're looking to reclaim that time and hope, the superintendent hopes to have some more information to the public within the next two weeks.
Thank you. Are there any other follow-ups to that? Okay, if not, we can move on to the next caller. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Colleen Sosa, I apologize if I got your name wrong. Um, we have sent you a unmute request that you can accept, and if you could state your name and address, Colleen.
If you haven't, Colleen, please press your unmute button, which is in the participant column, there you go.
You're unmuted now.
Hi, Colleen.
My name is Colleen Sosa, I live at 271 Oakwood Drive. Um, I just wanted to call in to, I'm a teacher and a parent, I have a fifth grader at Holland Hill, and I teach at Ludlow High School, and I just wanted to, um, first of all, speak for, there is a large group of parents who hybrid is actually working for at the elementary level, and I just don't feel like we hear that enough, there's a lot of, um, loud voices complaining, um, so I just wanted to speak on behalf of those parents and thank the board for really keeping the health and safety of kids and staff in mind. That's all.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Peterson, a comment from you? Not while you are muted, however.
Sorry, no, I, my, my mouse was elsewhere. Uh, I just want to thank, just for, for her, her comment. Um, one of the things that I've noticed throughout, throughout our experience here in 2020 is that people are really on, uh, a broad spectrum, uh, with this. There are families who feel very cautious, who want to be very cautious with the, you know, their, their health, their, their children's health, health of other people in the household. For, for them, remote may be working very well. There are people for whom, uh, hybrid is working. Uh, I have two high schoolers, hybrid is working okay, I know my boys would prefer to be back, but I'm not in kind of a crisis point with them. Um, but there are that we hear from, for whom hybrid is not working. Uh, and, and I, I think it's important, and I know that all of the members on the board, and they can agree or disagree with me, um, we receive a lot of, the public, we receive a lot of comments from, from people who maybe have never commented before on, uh, our educational setup here in town. Uh, so we, we have seen that range of commentary, and I think we, you know, we do see that probably the majority of families do want their kids to be back in school, uh, you know, more, more time, but we're not dead to the, to the parents who have said, this is working for us, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the future. Um, I, I, I really just want to say that, is that, is that I, I don't ever want us to appear like we are favoring one group or another. I know that every member of this board takes their duties very seriously and does try to process information from, from all families and from all points of view. And, and really, I just, I want to just leave you with that, that point.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Vitale?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, because I know this has been said before, and just like Mr. Peterson said, um, there's not a, 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 a small group of parents complaining, and they're just the loudest. There are a large group of parents who are asking for help, um, and sometimes begging for help. And that is much different than just complaining because, you know, they want to go back to work, and this is screwing up their childcare or something like, like it's, that's not what we're dealing with, that's not what we're hearing. This is literally people begging for help, and their children need help in school, and the hybrid scenario is not working. Um, and it really is heartbreaking. Um, so I just, as a, as a mom, myself, um, of a child with an IEP, who fought for years and stood in those meetings, it's, it's sometimes eerily similar to being in a PPT and feeling like you're begging for help and you can't get any answers. So I am very sensitive to it personally, um, but it's very real, and we have to do everything we possibly can to help those kids.
Any quick comment from another board member, and if not, Mr. Asa, I turn to you to find us another raised hand.
Okay, so since I'm not seeing any, um, virtual hands going up at the moment, I would like to ask anyone that may be having trouble with a virtual hand to, um, unmute their video, so I can actually see you, um, and literally raise your hand for the camera. Um, just gonna give this a second while we wait, because I, right, at the moment, I do not have any hands raised. Now, those of you who have joined us since we talked about this last, um, if you are on a mobile device, you should be able to tap, um, the buttons, the three buttons at the bottom of your screen and, uh, raise your hand. If you're on a laptop or, um, desktop, you can click on the participants button, um, and then just hover over your own name, and you should see a hand there, which you can press. Um, we know it's working. Uh, Chrissy Kelly, I see Chrissy Kelly's hand coming up. I just sent you a unmute request that you can accept and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, sorry. Um, I'm on my mobile phone. It's Chrissy Kelly, and it's one, I live at 117 Colonial Drive. Um, I actually wanted to ask a question about, and I know, I'm sure there is no definitive answer to this right now, and nor do I expect there to be one, but, um, I just wanted to know what the, what, you know, who would be in charge of, is it the board, is it Mike Cummings, is it a group effort of kind of, I hate to use the term postmortem, when there are literally people dying, but I just feel like, when this is all over, what the new normal looks like? Like, when we flip the switch, is the goal to just pick up where we left off, and everything is the same? Or do we say, you know, when do we say, hey, you know what, we learned X, Y, and Z about our system, or things that we really could be doing different now, either with the new technology that we've incorporated, or, you know, just from a scheduling perspective? Like, some of the things that people have been talking about online are, you know, hybrid, you know, something, and we can argue this in another forum, like, the kids are falling behind, the kids aren't falling behind, you know? There seem to be a ton of advocates to, um, for the smaller class sizes in elementary school, like, is that something that, hey, maybe this half-day model really works? I'm, I'm not saying I'm advocating for that, I'm just saying, you know, is there, uh, you know, the, the thing that I actually advocated for multiple times was for, you know, more recess. If our kids really aren't falling behind, and they're only in school half a day, like, maybe there really is time for an extra recess in elementary school, or I really wanted to have recess in middle school. Like, do we say, hey, the kids are only in school two days a week, and they haven't fallen, I'm putting in air quotes, fallen behind? Um, so maybe there really is some, you know, time that we can carve out of instructional time, or I know the middle school was supposed to go to block scheduling next year. Like, let's assume in September, everything is normal, like, do we have the conversation of, oh, wait, maybe that works, maybe that doesn't work? Like, I just feel like, you know, is that an admin thing, is it a Board of Ed thing? Like, had there been any discussion about that yet? I know we're, you know, probably just putting out fires, you know, multiple fires daily, and can't think ahead that far, but just wanted to know, I'd hate to almost waste this opportunity, you know, do we need to pull kids out of, you know, instruction time for, you know, band, private school students, or small group, you know, stuff like that.
Yep, we have a couple of board members who are eager to jump on this with a, a response, Ms. Gerber? And thank you, Chrissy, for your question.
Yeah, um, I, I, I would say that I would imagine there will be a lot of things that we'll be looking at. I mean, obviously not in the immediate future, since we still have a ways to go on this, but, you know, I'm sure we will continue to have discussions. We are working on a district improvement plan, um, that, you know, will be looking ahead within the next five years. So I would imagine that there'll be plenty of things that we can learn from this. Um, but I would, I would say that I, I don't think anyone, um, thinks that the hybrid is i- ideal at all, um, and that it is something that we would want to continue with, um, by any way, shape, or form. So I, I, I mean, none of us have said that, Mike Cummings hasn't said that. It's just, this is what is working under the circumstances we are operating under in the middle of a global pandemic. Um, so I don't think any of us are saying that half-day for elementary is a good thing, that two days in school for middle and high school is a good thing. It's simply what is working for what we are dealing with at this time. Um, so that's, that's my, and this is just my view, I mean, I, you know, but I certainly would look forward to having many discussions at the board table and with the superintendent to discuss these issues. I would say one thing that we've discussed many times before we had COVID, and that has really come into play since, is the need to air condition all of our schools that aren't fully air conditioned, um, because that certainly played a part in not being able to go back full-time in September because of the air filtration and the hot or the lack of cool air in many of our schools. So I would hope that realizing that air quality is very important, whether you're in a pandemic or not, would kind of get a ground swell to improve that from a facility's perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Mr. Asa, did you want to follow up with comments? And I see you, Ms. Vitale.
I actually, I, I think this is actually a very good question, um, to be honest, um, because I do believe that, um, after all of this, and as we move forward, there will be a lot of dissection on what was done, and I believe that has already happened to a point. I mean, I believe we did learn, um, from the issues that we had in March, when we just shut down right away and went to full remote. I mean, there were lessons learned there that I believe the administration has tried to improve the model. Um, I think we're all in agreement that it's not, um, the best educational model for kids, it's, it's what we're in, but I do think we've, we've learned a little, but we do have more to learn. I, I, I agree, and I, I just, I don't necessarily know or can speak to the detail of that dissection, and how much of it will be the board versus, um, you know, some things will involve the board, some things won't, but I do hear you and, and think that, um, there is a lot to be learned, and, and some of the things with regards to kids falling behind, um, you know, some of that we may be looking at for a long period of time. Um, you know, we could be dealing with some of this for children for years. You know, we could be dealing with some of this for children for years. Um, we're not, we're not tone deaf to that. We know that. I believe the superintendent knows that. And I, I do, at least as me as a board member can say, I'm committed to seeing through that we do whatever we need to do for these kids to get back to where they needed to be. Um, to answer your question, are we just going to flip a switch and go back to normal? I don't see February of 19 normal days anytime soon, but I do have cautious optimism that we will be back in the buildings more hours per day on a more regular basis, on a better schedule. And as Ms. Vitale shared, I am, I am very optimistic and looking forward to hearing what that plan and new schedule is in the next week or two and that when we'll be able to implement that. Thank you.
Ms. Tally, did you want to make a comment? And then I'll turn to you, Ms. Pitco.
Um, just very quickly, thank you, um, Ms. Kelly for that question. The first part about who makes the decision making in terms of the district improvement plan, I think that some of the things you mentioned might come into those discussions. And there are, um, committees that parents and other community members are a part of. They were formed back in February. They had gotten to work and unfortunately the pandemic sort of stopped that work. The superintendent is hoping to get those started again. So other, you know, community members will be part of these discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Pitco, and then Ms. Jacobson.
I have given this a lot of thought and I definitely think that that reflective time is gonna, is gonna happen. I know as we're in this virtual world, um, we're already seeing changes. I, I can tell you a, as a science educator, you know, what I'm teaching, my science curriculum, next generation science standards, that's brand new curriculum. How I'm teaching has completely changed. Science has always been hands-on and now I have to virtually teach. And then how I engage with my students has changed. So everything about what I'm doing, I just assumed my students back in March understood technology, understood Google Classroom. We had been using it. But I really started to understand not only that, but for executing skills and some how I need to help them maneuver through that. So I definitely think there's going to be a huge reflective period in all grade levels and all subjects and everything we do system wide.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. And then we can move on to another caller.
Hi, Chrissy. I just wanted to quickly, a couple of things. Um, hi. Um, so just a couple of quick thoughts. And yeah, uh, is that right now we're operating in our state and in our nation really under an emergency order. So what's happening right now is not legislatively would need to also change, um, from the days of that we're required to be in school hours, things like that. So there's some legislation pieces to that. I agree that there is always opportunity to see, well, what was successful? What were the successes? Why were the successes? How can we scale that? Um, and then just finally, in terms of this falling behind thing, you know, who's defining falling behind on what? And this is a diverse community and it is a diverse state. And we know that there are thousands of children disconnected in this state right now. So I think we just need to be mindful of falling behind for whom and on what metrics. So just as we do look forward to that, those will be things that I'll be thinking about and considering. But yeah, always opportunity to see what worked. Um, but I think that we even had an initial metric on that just by the sheer number of additional students that qualified for summer school with just missing one quarter. So, um, being out of school anyway. So I think that to echo Mr. Asa's point, this could be something that we would be looking at for quite a long time.
Thank you. Mr. Asa, would you like to turn us to the next caller? And thank you, Chrissy.
Yes. Um, I just want to note that I have one virtual hand raised right now of Michelle DiMartino. I am going to get to you. But in the meantime, um, Ms. Moyes was on earlier and she is now on the phone. So I just want to give her an opportunity. Uh, I am just sent an unmute request, uh, to her. Let's see if we can get her on the phone real quick. Okay, Liz, you're on mute. Okay, hold on.
So Liz, you're on mute. You're, there's a terrible echo. So we'll send the request again, but I believe what Mr. Asa's instructions were is to step away from your computer and take the phone call away from the computer. And that might help with the echo. So if you can hear us and Mr. Asa, if you could send another unmute request, we could try that again, try that again, try that again, try that again. Now, we're, um, Ms. Moyes, I don't know if it's a circumstance of you being near your computer while making the phone call, but there's a terrible echo. So why don't we turn to Michelle DiMartino in the meantime. And Liz, if you want to try this again, we can come back to you. If that's okay with you, Mr. Asa.
Yes, I'm going to actually, uh, Ms. Moyes had emailed, uh, the board. I'm going to email her now and give her the opportunity to send her comment or question in email that I can maybe read for her. Michelle DiMartino, you are on. If you could read your, uh, just restate your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure. This is Michelle Anne Anthony DiMartino, 99, Patrick Drive. So we each have a comment. Um, they're kind of unrelated, but both valid. So I'll let Anthony go first.
Sure.
Yes.
All right. So I, I'll make mine pretty brief. So I, I, I think these are, um, directed at Ms. Jacobson just because she answered the question. Uh, Mr. Benedetto brought up earlier. The, uh, the idea of having a plan, executing a plan, we were, we were a few days away from going back to school. Uh, but when you, when, when we asked certain board members this question about having a plan, it sounds like the plan is not complete. When we're talking about ordering equipment and, and technology and air filtration, how are we going to go back to school if these things weren't done? So I think maybe if you could clarify that point, I think that would be helpful because I think that creates a lot of frustration around the, the parents who are advocating to get kids back to school. And that's what we, maybe I'm articulating, that's what we mean by where's the plan? Right? Because, you know, what, what was posted on the website in July was a copy paste of the Department of Education's state plan. Right? So the question is, is there's 20 things that need to be done? How many, you know, how many are done? Because they obviously weren't all done days before we were supposed to go to school.
All right. So why don't we, once, right?
I just wanted to clarify because the other thing you had mentioned was about being left behind. And I think I can give you a really simple stance on being left behind. Fifty-five percent of the state of Connecticut went full time up until the end of October. Our, uh, our nations around the world, especially in lockdown, are going to school full time. If we all agree going to school full time is better than not, then that's your definition of getting left behind. So I'll leave you to answer.
Thank you. And then we'll turn to your question, Michelle, afterwards. But if, if anyone on the board wants to, please, and Ms. Jacobson, I don't know if you want to respond first or if there's someone else from the board, um.
Me? Oh, yeah. No, I can, I can respond. I mean, I mean, are you talking about the going back in November? Or in September?
If referring to your response to Mr. Benedetto who had asked about a plan and he would just like some clarification on where things stand, like per the facilities, for instance. And do I have that right, Mr. DiMartino?
Yes. You, uh, yes, sorry. You, you had said to Mr. Benedetto that, you know, we have a, we all, we had a plan to go back in November. Uh, but when you answered the question, you made it sound like components of the plan weren't complete. And that's enraging to us because we're supposed to go back a week. You know, how can things like technology or Plexiglas or whatever things that weren't complete not be complete?
Those are complete. Those are complete and those are in. There was some back order issues on technology items, but those have been ordered except for some devices we're still waiting on is the only thing for younger students. But all of those things are in and available at this point. But in terms of some things, I'll be clear with you. There's a national shortage and a lot of staff. So, and not all of it was necessary to go back per se, but some was. And those things have been delivered to the system. So just clearly, that's, that's a simple answer on that.
Ms. Vitale, would you like to follow up? Ms. Vitale, would you have a response to, a further response?
Yeah, I do want to, none of the, um, items that Ms. Jacobson referenced prevented us from going back on November 9th. We have the technology to go back. Um, we had most of the air filters upgraded in terms of, you know, the ventilation systems. There are some that are on special order that are unique sizes, but that did not prevent us from going back. We are constantly building health and safety measures that are in place and the instruction that's in place. And some of the technology, um, you know, now that we're having students in quarantine, we're realizing that the, the wifi in some of the elementary schools is not what it needs to be in order to live stream into the elementary school classrooms. So those kids that are on quarantine can join their classrooms and that should be done within the next few weeks. That wasn't preventing us from going back to school, but it adds another layer of, of improving instruction for all children. And some of that work, you know, we knew that it had to happen to Mr. Benedetto's point that we've known since March. You know, we have to remember that schools were closed and just even getting people into the building was a challenge. Um, getting supplies was a challenge. There were really and still are supply chain issues on certain items. Air filters, technology, Chromebooks that were ordered back in May and June, we're still waiting on some. It hasn't prevented us from moving forward and opening, but, you know, we want to continue to improve and do better. But that, that was not standing in the way. Um, it was the health data as was shared by the superintendent.
And I s- I saw Michelle screwed away, so I didn't.
She's coming. One sec.
Okay. Or we can circle back. In the meantime, as for, is there any other board member that wants to make a quick comment before? And there we are. Michelle, just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Michelle DiMartino, 99, Patrick Drive. Um, so my question is with regards to elementary school, um, as a former, uh, PTA president, I'm thinking in terms of, we're kind of stuck in this situation now. How do we make the best out of our situation? So programs like Kain, um, Mill River, um, Art in the Classroom, Junior Achievement, can we get these programs back in the classroom so that?
Is it my computer? Did we have a malfunction here? Malfunction?
I think they did. I think they accidentally did.
Does anyone want to kind of take that where she's coming or should we pick it up? Is there anyone that wants to respond to that from the board or we can circle back just to make sure? Um, in the meantime, Ms. Ms., uh, Ms. Vitale, do you want to make a quick comment?
I mean, that's really more operational. We'll definitely bring that to the superintendent. And I think that, you know, the board, it's been said many times by board members that there's, that those extra pieces, the extracurriculars, the, um, things like junior achievement, some of the PTA programming that maybe has been put on hold to see how we can implement those, um, as well as identify maybe some new opportunities for kids would be helpful. So we could definitely bring that back, um, to staff.
Ms. Ms. Pitco, do you want to make a comment or respond?
Yeah. So I'm in charge of my daughter's diverse, the, my daughter's School of Diversity Week. And so what we did was we had parents read a, a book that was chosen by the staff per day. And then the principal broadcast was a video and the principal broadcast the video to the school through their Google Classroom in AM and PM. And then the teachers were able to do a mini lesson. So the principal and some teachers had gotten together, um, with some parents via Zoom and they had picked some appropriate books. And so we're trying to look at doing that now with other things like Kain and, um, anything we can, as long as the parents are willing to videotape themselves.
Thank you. Um, I see Ms. Moyes has popped up on the screen again. Should we give that the old college try?
The request has been sent to her.
We're all rooting for you, Ms. Moyes. Hmm, okay.
Hold on. Give her one second. The request is set.
Moment. So I think I see another hand. So unless you're feeling really optimistic in this moment, Mr. Asa, we can turn to, I see Ms. Mugal, a student at Lolo High School is, has her hand raised.
Hello?
Yes. Could you state your name and address? That would be great. Thank you.
Hello?
Sophia, we can hear you. Or is that Liz Moyes?
Hello, this is Liz Moyes.
Oh, great. Okay. This is cool news. We're so happy to hear you. We can hear you. So please go ahead. State the name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Liz Moyes, 1120 South Pine Creek Road, Fairfield. Um, I'm calling with specific reference to Fairfield Lolo High School. I am, um, a parent volunteer here on this Tools for Schools Committee. You may remember last year, 2019, 2020, there were, um, classes relocated due to air quality, environmental concerns. There was then an engineering company that came in to, uh, address those concerns. Contemporaneously, uh, school staff members at Fairfield Lolo High School, um, also filed an OSHA or Occupational Health and Safety Administration complaint. The engineering, um, company supposedly ran, uh, remediated these problems. And afterwards I asked to do follow-up in the areas regarding air, uh, monitoring. And I met with, um, various, I met with Mr. Papa George, Mr. Hats is the principal, and another member of Fairfield Public Schools and was denied that request. And at the time, by the way, I was assured that there had been proper maintenance, regular routine maintenance and that there, um, that everything was up to snuff with the HVAC system. COVID then happened and as a result, there are new air quality, um, requirements in schools. And then Fairfield Public Schools engaged Van Zelm to do an assessment regarding air quality in Fairfield Public Schools. We now know that air quality at the Fairfield Public School, at the Fairfield Lolo High School is not conducive to a hundred percent return unless the HVAC system is working as designed. There were four single spaced pages of problems with, um, the HVAC units at the Fairfield Lolo High School. I have requested repeatedly to find out what is the school district's efforts have been to remediate these. I understand Mr. Papa George did, provided a report on 1027 to the BOE. Uh, but it wasn't specific enough. I have emailed and I have gotten no response. And I, I also just want to say in closing that in terms of the board, I have emailed you all. And I feel like there, I understand that many parents want to return a hundred percent full time. But at least with respect to the high school, this is not safe under the certain cir- under the circumstances that we find ourselves in. And we have no transparency from the school district about when it will be safe. And I'm requesting that, please.
Thank you. Um, from the board who would like to respond. Is there a comment from the, a member of the board? So seeing none, we can, um, thank you, Liz.
Hold on. I think, I think Christine's trying to talk, but she's muted.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm glad to hear that. Um, sorry about that. You're still muted?
Sorry.
There you are. Thank you.
You know, during these town, town halls, we don't specifically talk about individual staff members. I will just talk about, um, you know, I know the testing has been at Fairfield Lolo High School throughout the years. Um, OSHA came in. That test came back without any issues. Their repairs are being done at FLH, FLHS. The filters have been replaced. District wide, the Board of Education is asking for our HVAC syst- HVAC systems to be retrofitted. Um, we're putting, we put a capital request in, that's going to be gone before town bodies. So, you know, we are moving forward with doing those improvements, not only at Lolo, but at other schools as well. I mean, it's one of the, the prices that we pay with just having some older buildings. But we do see the need and we will continue to advocate, as Mrs. Gerber said earlier, with four upgraded, you know, air filtration and air conditioning in our school buildings. Um, we can't really have parents going in and doing their own testing. That does need to be done, um, you know, by school staff and by qualified professionals. But I might go and follow up with, um, Mr. Papa George to see if there's information that was supposed to be shared with you to see if he could get that to you. Um, I can't.
Right. I mean, my concern is returning back at a hundred percent without the HVAC system working as designed. And I haven't heard the board even address that. It's like it doesn't matter. So I am concerned about that too. And I don't think there's been any transparency to know that any of those four single spaced pages have been addressed. And I have asked for that repeatedly.
Um, thank you. Mr. Asa, do you want to follow up?
Well, just, just to- Just to the point of, you know, the HVAC and filtration and whatnot, that we actually have discussed this with Mr. Papa George at the table with regards to filtration and what the state requirements are for in person. And from what I understood in our communications at the board table is that we were told that we do meet the requirements. There are requirements and then there are gold standards. But we, like with anything, but from my understanding and discussions at the table, we do meet the minimum, you know, if not better, safety requirements for filtration for the kids being in the building. So that's all I can say. As Ms. Vitali said, you know, she can bring this to, you know, to the people that.
Sure, and I would just respectfully request you to look at page five of that Van Zelm report because it does indicate that with the new standards, unless the Fairfield Lolo High School's filtration system, HVAC system is working as designed, it is not able to support 100% capacity. And I would just appreciate it if the board members focused on that to understand what that means. Because I don't think that an insurer, I mean, we have an engineering company telling us what the facts are here. And I haven't heard from the district that they have, they have, that the system is now working as designed. And I just wanted to add one last thing. Ms. Brown, who opened up the meeting, was my son's teacher and an excellent teacher. And I applaud all the teachers, especially Ms. Brown. I know how hard she works. And I want to say as a parent that I am very grateful for all the efforts that she has done on behalf of Fairfield Public Schools.
Thank you very much and thank you for that comment. And generally, while we don't discuss staffing issues here, we'll take exception with that because that's very nice. But just a reminder, if your comments and your questions could stick to topics that are in the purview of the Board of Ed, which is policy, facilities and budget issues, but not specifically about staffing or about your individual child's concerns or needs. So with that, Mr. Asa, can you please?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moise.
Yep, we do have, we do have two virtual hands up at the moment. I see a actual live hand up as well. We will get to you. But just as a reminder for anyone that's joined since last time I mentioned this, if you go under Participants on your laptop or desktop and hover over your own name, you can click the virtual hand to raise your hand. That is how we will know to call on you. I do see a couple of people with their video turned on. I am continuing to pan, so if you can't raise a virtual hand on your mobile device or laptop, please make sure your video is on and I will continue to look for raised hands. At this point, we're going to go to Sophia Mugal. I am sending you a unmute request now.
And hi, Sophia, for the record, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Sure, Sophia Mugal, 196 Woods End Road. I have a question in regards to the new policy requiring students to turn their cameras on in order to be counted as present in class. I was wondering when this decision, I don't know if this is in your purview, if this decision was made by Superintendent Cummings or another authority, but I was wondering if this was looked at from an equity perspective. I know some students feel as though this would be an invasion and don't feel comfortable exposing their home environment, which varies from student to student. So I was wondering if you could speak about, speak about that decision-making process.
Thank you for your question, Sophia. Mr. Peterson, I believe that is your hand raised, so I turn to you.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I'll make a few brief comments because one thing that the public should know is that we're actually, as board members, getting a lot of emails right now from students. So like there seems to have been a push, you know, this is a, this is a new policy, you know, begun this week. And I think students have formed some opinions on it and they're letting us know right now. One of the things, and I'm sorry, I haven't had time to read all of these emails. I'm trying to pay attention. The, what's the point? That not all of the Chromebooks allow the users to blur their backgrounds. I, which is what, you know, one of the things when I first scanned this, I thought, why don't they just do that? But that's a thing that I'm certainly willing to follow up with our technology staff about because I do hear that, I do hear that question, you know, that concern that students may not feel comfortable exposing the inside of their house, the inside of their room, you know, and anything that can come of that bullying or any sort of, you know, unwanted attention. So I am, I am sensitive to that. This is a thing that came out of professional development that was done over the election day. There was a two-day break to us at our, at our meeting on the 10th. I, you know, other people can comment on it. I'm sure there are going to be bumps in the road. Our goal is to increase engagement with the students, which is absolutely a thing that I think is very important to do. And a lot of parents and staff felt was, felt was lacking under the other system. I'm not saying this can't be changed. That one thing about not blurring the background, I, I'm interested in following up with that. But, you know, please be free with your questions. I'm sure this is something that will be tweaked as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone on the board want to make a, Ms. Vitali?
I'm really just reiterating what Mr. Peterson said. And I had, this came up, a parent emailed us earlier in the week about this. I'm just seeing if, you know, you could just put a backdrop, you know, behind the students to kind of hide your, your home setting. And if it's something that students need help with the technology, maybe a teacher could just walk their class through that at the beginning of a class. So we are definitely, it's on our radar and we will follow up with the superintendent on this. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Ms. Maxon Cannelly, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I'll just say, I, you know, read the emails. Well, I only needed to read one, but to get the gist of it. And I agree and I appreciate Mr. Peterson saying that he's going to follow up on that. So I'll leave that to him because I do think that that ability is important. However, I do think it's an important policy for the district to maintain. It is always something that would be easier to relax in the future, but to not start with it, I think is what, part of what has made this very difficult. And I say that as a classroom teacher who, for whom it was required from day one, all students have their cameras on. Because one of the things referenced in the letter was there are other ways to ensure that students are there, not without constantly interrupting your instruction. Sophia, are you there? Daniel, are you there? Gabriella, are you there? And that just, now you're interfering dramatically in the instruction that all students are receiving. And I don't think that's appropriate. I definitely hear the concerns and the email was very well written. So my hat is off to, you know, whoever did the crafting of it sincerely. There are some really important points there. But the teacher's ability to be able to teach to the live students, the students who are hybrid learners whom they'll see in two days, the students who are the full-time remote learners whom they will never see in person, a tool that makes their job a little bit easier, I think, is an important tool. I definitely appreciate the student voice and I also know that I have some individual students with individual concerns and they address those with me one-on-one and we've worked things out. But the overall premise that you need a face-to-face for attendance and then a face-to-face expectation so that teachers can tell at a quick glance at a screen that everybody is there. Now, you're absolutely right, one point in the letter, eyes can drift off just as easily with the cameras on. And so that engagement isn't there. I hear that. But I've also had students who took a nice long walk when their camera went off. And that's not, the teacher can't be trying to chase that. This is one small tool we can put in our teachers' hands and I am very much in favor of it for that reason.
Thank you. So shall we move on to the next caller, Mr. Asa? Thank you, Sophia.
Nick, you're muted.
Mr. Asa, you are unmute. Thank you.
I apologize for that. Next caller is Dan, or participant is Daniel. I just sent you an unmute and you are unmuted. So could you state your name and home address, please?
My name is Daniel Jaber and I reside at 246 Pratt Street. And I just want to thank Mr. Peterson, Ms. Vitality for everything that they've said. But I feel that the problem goes beyond just blurring backgrounds. And I understand that Ms., I believe Maxon Kelly stated that, that the issue is like grabbing the attention of students and to increase engagement, but I feel like it is way more than that. And as a fair, sorry, did you say something? Oh, sorry. As a Fairfield Public student, so working through the new camera mandate, I think that has a few flaws in equities. And I'm not saying it's completely flawed and we need to scrap it completely. But I do think there are some issues that need to be brought up and kept in the front of our minds. And I do know that there's good intentions that came with this mandate. However, it does raise a lot of complications and worries for me as a student and for a lot of our student bodies, so we've heard. And I do think that the, the problems do outweigh the positives. Starting with a majority of students do not have a tranquil and private place to join a meeting without any disruptions. Not all of us have our own office spaces and stuff where we can just work freely without anybody disrupting us and no problems. And I understand earlier, we also talked about, someone mentioned the.
You've, unfortunately, he froze. We've lost Mr. Jaber. There you are. That's a little bit better. But there we go. Welcome back.
I was saying how, I know that earlier it was brought up that we were saying that the schools can have some connection issues when trying to present to students from across town or through Wi-Fi. And I just want to mention that not only does the school have connection issues, but even right now, it just happens, issues on a daily basis where I disconnect from meets and I don't.
Oh, no. You're cutting out.
Oh, sorry. Is it good?
You're, you're making a case in point, proof positive. You just cut out, but you're back.
Yeah, and then what I was saying was that when we, when we add on that parents are going to be working from home or siblings are also going to be working from home, not only are every student has Wi-Fi, but not every student has the bandwidth and the Wi-Fi capabilities to support audio and camera at the same time, as well as have other documents open and working in class. And I've heard this from many students. I've also heard from students that have siblings that if their siblings try to join a meet at the same time, it just does not end well. And then this is just, not only that, but it also is a complete invasion in a way of students' privacy because many students don't have the ability to isolate themselves in environments. And they, they kind of don't have the option not to work alongside their family and their students and siblings. And not every student is comfortable sharing this level of intimacy. It's like, for example, even if I'm in my room presenting and I'm alone, some students may have a poster that another student might not agree with or something that they don't want to see. For example, a student could have something that could be very like different than other students and shouldn't have to get like bullied or even if they're not immediately getting bullied, they shouldn't have to show that if they're not comfortable with. And then I know the case could be made, oh, just go somewhere else. But as I said previously, not everyone has the ability to just move around freely in their house and go wherever they want and work, especially when I have, I know I have a parent working from home and I can only stay in one part of the house. And then my connection glitches when she's on calls and I am too. And then we also have to take into accountability the, not only that we have other siblings in the calls, but we have responsibilities that, because we're at home more. Like I know for me and a lot of other students I've heard from, we're at home a lot more now. And that means we have to help out with younger siblings and around the house and just do a lot of stuff that causes me to, I'm still paying attention in school, of course, but sometimes I do have to multitask and I can't be at the camera 24/7, even if I'm, even if I'm listening and paying attention in class. And I just think there's a way to accommodate students for that. I understand, it's like completely understandable that to turn on Google meets, like cameras for Google meets, to have our attend, but to have our attendance relying upon it is just unjust to me and to us as a student body. And we understand that your decision is beneficial for some of the student body, but it seems to have forgotten that every student has a different situation and not everyone is created. And this is a serious equity concern. And I understand your needs. What'd you say?
Did you want to make a final point? Thank you. I appreciate you.
I'm finishing. I'm sorry, this is lengthy. And I understand that you want to provide a sense of community and to encourage interactions between students and teachers and that reflects upon the traditions of a traditional classroom. But I don't, forcing to turn on their cameras is any means to accomplish these goals. Distance learning and teaching is very complicated as it is. And I understand it's something we're all trying to figure out as a community. But it would not with the added pressure of needing to have our cameras on and to look good for a camera or to like present yourself like, like just to look presentable for your classmates just is an added stress to me as a student. And I'm urging you to keep these difficulties that students face in the front of your mind and reverse this inappropriate and poorly implemented requirement because the stressful and anxiety-filled effects are not worth the risk that should have originally been thought of in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone that would like to comment from the board? Ms. Maxon Cannelly, thank you, Daniel.
Yeah, Daniel, really well done and good job soldiering through the tech issues. That's not easy to do and keep your train of thought. So obviously I disagree with you, but I respect enormously many of your points. And what I will also say, without opening the door wide open, so I'll be as subtle as I can about this. The policy gets established for a reason. How teachers operationalize it in the best interest of students is a whole other matter. When I am using, when I'm working with my students who are remote and I'm having them use a function, for example, if you've heard of EdPuzzle and it involves a video. Well, they have horrible lag at home if they also maintain Google meets. Simple, they turn the camera off. Sometimes I will send them off the class and then they report back. There are all sorts of ways that teachers are going to operationalize this for their students, which is taking into account many of student concerns. On the other hand, to a couple of your specific points, that students have to worry about their physical appearance. I have no problem with that. You have to worry about your physical appearance when you're in the classroom and what the heck it's, you know, shored up and you have to look that way for class. I don't think that is a compelling reason to not have this policy. The fact that you talk about multitasking is of enormous concern because the moment you are multitasking, in fact, you're no longer present in the classroom. That said, I absolutely have students who will walk around with their technology. They are on the move. I don't bring anyone's attention to it and they're busy enough in the classroom that nobody is, you know, paying any attention to that. But being mobile is not a problem with being camera on. But knowing that you are there, if you are stepping away from the camera, you are stepping outside of the classroom. And I definitely hear what you're saying about if you actually have a young child that you're having to care for at home, then that student, I just fervently hope that they reach out to the teacher and explain, I have this, I am having to help my parent who just had surgery or whatever. But the district has to, in certain cases, bring to bear a certain expectation. And you can read that as pressure and I would acknowledge that. But a certain expectation that in your classroom, you're expected to be engaged in the class with the classroom instruction. And the easiest way that a teacher can do that is seeing you. And the other concerns that you raise can be absolutely worked out and they are absolutely valid points. I am not trying to invalidate any of the points that you raise. But ultimately, the district has to ensure your engagement to the best of its ability. And so that's really one of the reasons why I, you know, again, am in favor of it. But please know, I repeat that I'm not invalidating your concerns and I hope that where that they apply, I do hope that you'll reach out to your teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Maxon Cannelly. Anyone from the board want to make an additional comment before we move to our next caller? Quick comments? Okay, Mr. Asa, I turn to you. For our next caller.
We have Donna Carnell. I am sending you, Donna, a mute, unmute request. You should have it popping up.
Daniel, thank you for your comments and hi, Donna.
Donna is unmuted. If you could state your, I think you know the drill, name and address.
Donna, let's see, Donna Carnell, Southport, Connecticut. I thought you were going to send me something better than an unmute button. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Late nights. I have three points I'd like to say and then I guess a question that I don't understand. One of the, one of the things, and I think Ms. Brown started it, my son had you as well as a teacher. I look at it and say the teacher's jobs have to be harder now more than ever. I see that and I've also spoken to some friends of the teachers and it's understandable. I think where the problem lies is not that the teachers aren't working harder, but some of the teachers have their own restrictions because of circumstances. Maybe they have COVID, maybe a family member has COVID. So I think sometimes the teachers aren't as accessible or taking time off because of COVID. So I don't think it's that they're not doing a great job. I think it's they have their own limitations. I think another board member made reference to something about falling behind. I think the best way to gauge when a student is falling behind, if they're open to it, says they're falling behind, I need help. And when they've gone to teachers, the teacher isn't there because they're out. So they have a sub or there's nobody in the classroom that day. Or look at their grades, has the board or? Or look at their grades. Has, has the board or anybody compared, you know, the grades from this year to last year of how the seniors or juniors are doing in, let's say, high school. Every year in school is extremely important, but is anybody measured first quarter to year after year? That's a good way to know. Is the school, is this working or what's broken? Um, an example was, I believe that, and I don't know exactly, I think it was just the high schools that were affected by this, that they literally closed down for a day so that students can take their PSATs. If that's correct, I'd like to understand the logic behind that. Considering right now colleges are going test optional, why you would take away a day of school? And again, I may not have all the facts right, but if they are, I'd love to know about it. And there was also a parent that made reference asking for information on the filters and things of that nature. I can, I can say that, as I think Mr. Tally said, there are certain filters are on back order and there's certain quality of filters that are commercial grade. And I think you also mentioned that Ludlow High School is old. There's a part of Ludlow High School that's very new. Because I was on the board when we approved the windows for that.
So, Ms. Ludlow, if you could, if you have a final question, I knew you asked about the PSATs and a day off, but is there a final point you wanted to make?
Yes, um, I guess the question is, um, the air filters are an issue. My question is this, when, when are we planning on going fully synchronized? Cause it sounds like we're not ready to go back in person. So is there going to be a way that the students are going to be, um, fully synchronized?
So, um, is there anyone on the board that wants to take it? And I think point of clarity, because it was my understanding that it wasn't a board that had made the comment. So I don't know if a board member wants to follow up on students falling behind. It was a comment from another resident. So I don't know if, if a board member wants to address that. Um, but the question here is, when is there, is there a plan to go fully remote?
Synchronized.
Synchronized, I'm sorry, fully synchronized.
You're forgiven. It's late.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pico, to you.
Hi Donna. Uh, my understanding was this past Monday, uh, grade six through 12 were streaming in from their classes. So students that were in the cohort, that were in the classroom and the students that were in the cohort that were home were all learning together. Every class should be taking attendance. Every student should be attending their classes, grade six through 12. I think that it's the elementary school per school. We're waiting on the technology to be, come in and installed, but it's, it's in the coming weeks for the elementary school.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wanted to make a follow up comment in the board? Thank you, Donna.
Um, wait, I'd like to, if I may, in terms of to the board, what is the process to get the information in regards to the air filters? And what has been done and what is still to be done?
Um, Ms. Vitali, you had answered that in part earlier. Did you want to follow up?
Thank you.
We can, um, you know, the board is asking for updates just on, we'll, we'll continue to be getting upgrades on all of the systems in every school. Um, you know, as Mr. Ace has said, we have met the minimum in terms of what we need to do for the filters. Um, and as new filters are put in, they're, or come in, they're immediately installed in the buildings.
Well, last I heard that certain ones for Ludlow because it was the newest were on back order.
I, I don't have, I mean, I will follow up with Mr. Papa George. I don't have the most recent, you know, listing in terms of the work orders and what's been installed over the last few weeks. Sorry.
Thank you. I see an ear hand raised, Mr. Asa. Would you like to turn to?
Yeah, Donna, one of the things that has been mentioned was, um, differences between like MERV elevens and MERV 13 filters. Whereas what has happened is in certain instances, MERV elevens have been installed, which meet the, meet the requirements, meet or exceed the requirements. But we're still waiting for the gold standard MERV 13. Let's just say, I'm just using hypothetical words. Um, so while we might be waiting for those best in the industry filters, um, we have replaced in the meantime with acceptable ones that were improved over what would normally be used. But in some cases in our PD plans and our, you know, normal maintenance plans, we were using some of those filters, um, that were the recommendation of the state. So depending on the size of the filter and whatnot. So just so you know, yes, there are some filters that are backordered. Um, and those are the upgrades, but we are filtering the air with the, um, at least the minimum standard. If that helps.
Cause I knew there was a problem at Ludlow High School. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Donna. I see there are, there is another virtual hand, Mr. Asa.
Yeah, so, yeah, so somebody is on with a Yale New Haven, um, looks like Yale New Haven Hospital laptop possibly. I do not see a name, so I'm just going to send you a, uh, an unmute request. And if you could come off mute and state your name and address, you should be receiving that unmute request right now. There you go.
Hello, sorry, um, I'm on my work laptop, so I couldn't change, I couldn't figure out how to change my name.
Don't worry, I'm on mine too.
Yeah, so apologies. I was trying to figure out how to do it. I just couldn't figure it out. I'm Melissa Miller. I am at 462 Wormwood. Um, I had, um, two questions. Um, one was, um, I kept hearing the 90% of parents wanting their students to go back full time in many of calls and, and, um, being cited as that this is indicative that, and I'm wondering if there's any way we can get better data or information out there that wouldn't put, I guess, it, it got a lot of parents upset, um, um, because I think it didn't fully represent the full picture. And then we don't have, we didn't really have numbers to really represent that. So I'm wondering if there's better ways we can think about putting metrics out there that kind of tells the story a bit more. Um, and so that was one of my questions, because I know the surveys we get, um, are, can be confusing and they, there's a lot more to it than just one number. So I just wanted to just ask that question as a community. Um, yeah.
Can you clarify, do you mean a better picture about how many parents want their kids back full time? Could you just clarify the question a little bit for the board?
Um, yeah, so there was a statistic, I think I, I heard it thrown around in so many different venues that, um, when they filled out the survey about electing to full time, go back full time, a lot of parents, um, might've said that, yeah, 90% said selected were going back full time, but when that data was cited and referenced is that, that really interpreted that we all were com- were not comfortable with the hybrid method. So that was the inference that was made out of that survey data. So, um, I guess my question is, um, is there better ways that we could caveat the survey data that comes out, um, that, because I, because I know it's very simple, but at the same time, it caused, it caused a lot of confusion, I think. People saying, no, that's not what he meant. That's not what the data shows. And, and, and so, um, that's my first question. The second question, um, is that, is there ways, um, because I hear a lot of linkages, um, to like suicide and what's going on. And I, I, I know that there's a lot of mental health issues and ways as a community that we can take on that. And what's happening in our school district, are there, um, has there been talks about how we can better, um, monitor kids that are suffering? Because I think, uh, uh, we're in this pandemic for, it's going to be a while before we, we get back to normalcy. So how can we better take the pulse of what's going on, um, as a community? Rules and parent, is parents struggling? Um, that's quantifiable. I think like, I'm a, I'm a researcher, so I think about data. So I want, I want to see data that's meaningful and not confusing. So that's kind of where I'm coming from when I ask these questions.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying. Um, I'll turn to you, Ms. Gerber, and then to you, Mr. Asa.
Um, yeah, hi, thank you for your question. Um, I'm just going to address the first question that you had, which was about that, um, 88% number, I think it was. So I'm just looking here at the, uh, presentation that we received on October 27th, which is posted on the Board of Ed website. It's enclosure number one for the agenda for the October 27th Board of Ed meeting. And there is a graph here showing, um, that the, uh, percentage of parents who chose and they had to choose between either fully remote or full time in person. Those were, those are the only two choices they had. Um, and so 88% chose full time in person. Um, that said, we also received that night, and this is enclosure number nine for that same October 27th meeting, um, that parents were given the opportunity to provide comments. So even though they had to answer either remote learning or full in time, full back in person, they could add comments. Now, this isn't every parent didn't add a comment, so it's not as if it's the exact same thing. But of the parents who made comments, 48.7 said they wanted to return a full time in person. 47.9 of that group of parents, and again, this isn't the whole group of parents who responded to the survey, but of the ones who made comments, 47.9 said they wanted to stay in hybrid. So that, that's obviously much closer. But again, I just want to stress, that's not as if every parent who filled out the survey, which there were about 3,000, I think, responses to the survey choosing between full in person or full remote. But those who did comment, it was a lot more, it wasn't as black and white as the 88% saying they wanted full time in person. So I think that's what you're talking about, but that information is publicly provided. It was discussed at the October 27th meeting. Um, so it does provide a little more nuance to the question, not to say that there aren't plenty of parents who want to have their children back in full person, full time in person, and many students who feel that way. But it's not quite as, uh, sharp a divide as the results are simply because of the way the survey was worded.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Did, um, Ms. Pico, did you want to comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Asa, you were up next. And then, Ms. Rattelli, is your hand up? Okay, then we'll turn to you, Ms. Leeper, after Mr. Asa.
So just, um, following up on what Mrs. Gerber said, um, yes, it is correct. And thank you for sharing that information and where people can find that, um, Mrs. Gerber. Um, but to your, to your question, I understand the frustration with, um, the ambiguity or whatever it could cause of, of not just a clear picture. Um, but I do want to say, as, as a board member, I'll, I'll say it, you know, in public here. Um, I was very much in favor of a very black and white, straightforward survey, because at the time what we were looking for was, do you want, if you were given two choices, going back full time or going remote, what do you choose? And we needed that data and we needed that information to make the determinations on class sizes, distributions. We needed to know how many people would be going remote, how many people would be going at full time. And while it didn't give the opportunity to choose, I think it's just important to stress that, you know, we were not in a position to be offering three different options, a hybrid, a full in person and a remote. So the decision was made, um, just for point of clarity, to make it clear, um, these are your two choices. What do you choose? And that was data that we absolutely needed. Um, but I do hear what you're saying and I do hear how it could cause some confusion out in the community and the greater population and possibly some misunderstandings, because there was definitely a group of parents that would email us in favor of full in person. And there was also an equal amount potentially of people in hybrid. So not to say anyone is wrong or right, um, but moving forward, when we do have a situation like this again, you know, it may come down to a very black and white survey of are you in or are you out? Um, but thank you for your concerns and we'll be sure to share that with the district.
And Ms. Leeper, I'll turn it to you and then we can go back to your second question slash point, um, Ms. Miller, but Ms. Ms. Leeper?
I was just going to take, uh, this opportunity to highlight earlier in the meeting, someone mentioned the district didn't know how many families wanted full remote. I think it was in response to, uh, Mrs. Vitali sharing that 30% of Norwalk had opted for full remote. But, uh, unless I'm misunderstanding that person's comment, we do know how many families want full remote by the number of families that opted for our Remote Learning Academy, which was about 12% of our families. And then we got updated numbers on how many people wanted to remain in full remote or opt into full remote via this survey, um, that Mrs. Gerber just referenced, and it was approximately still 12%. And so I just wanted to, um, add that in case that member of the public is still on the meeting, that we do actually know how many Fairfield families wanted to be in full remote.
I believe it was a comment from Kristen, so if she is still here. Um, Melissa, to your second point about the mental health piece, um, you had asked kind of a question about supports and does anyone want to take that on from the board? Ms. Vitali?
Thank you for that question. And, um, you know, it is an area of concern. I would just say for families or for students, you know, I would hope that if they're, if they're struggling, that they would start by reaching out to their teacher, to their school counselor, to their principal. Um, the district's also doing some trauma screening for students to try to identify students who might have, um, you know, need. On the Fairfield Public Schools website, there's also mental health services that lists a lot of community resources that you can reach out to. There's also a place where you can submit your name. Um, you know, asking for services and asking for help through the website. So I, I just encourage people to, if you, if you're looking for services, to either reach out to your school or to, to access that form, um, on the website. This issue's come up at Board of Health meetings. Um, I asked if local pediatricians are screening. You know, it's a very complex issue. Um, you know, it's not, returning to school might help in some ways, but it might create new stresses for other students. So I think we really need to look at this comprehensively and for a lot of different angle, angles to make sure that our kids and our families are getting the supports that they need. And definitely open to, um, suggestions from the public. Um, you know, if resources that we can share with families, suggestions that you might need, that we can bring to, to staff. Um, you know, please email us with that.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Anyone else want to follow up on that comment concerning mental health and resources? So, Mr. Asa, with that, is there someone else who has a hand raised virtually or otherwise?
So at the moment, we have no virtual hand raises. Um, I did have, um, there was an option for people that were not going to be able to join via WebEx to register, pre-register for phone call in comment. Um, and you had to register with your phone number and, um, some information. Um, so far that, uh, those people are not on the call here. I'm not recognizing their numbers. So I'm not going to call, um, on, on them at this point. Um, and if anybody is on the call that thought that they pre-registered, um, please. But I do have, um, Dr. Henry Yun, uh, who is on here. I'm going to send you a unmute request now, uh, Mr. Yun.
And a reminder to state your name and your address for the record. Dr. Yun.
Good evening. Um, my name's Henry Yun. I'm in 280 Ryder's Lane in Fairfield. I just wanted to make a comment, um, if, if that was okay with the board in terms of, really more making an illustration of, um, or, or an example of that I found that was very helpful, um, when trying to give people a little perspective in terms of what's going on, not as if people don't have a good sense of what's going on. But I think in public health, one of our biggest roles is, is education. And so I am going to ask in advance for a little bit of latitude from the board, because it, you, you may not exactly know where I'm going, uh, from the very beginning, but hopefully it'll catch up.
Dr. Yun, could you just say, um, so the public knows, um, you know, who, who exactly you are, because you are, uh, a, a resource for the town?
Oh, so I am the, uh, I chair the Board of Health in Fairfield. Um, I'm also the School Medical Advisor for Stanford Public Schools and the Department of Health, uh, for the City of Stanford. So I, I do have, um, um, some experience and, and some knowledge, um, background information that again, I just wanted to share with, um, with anyone who's really willing to listen at this point. But in any case, um, so one of the ways that I've tried to explain how this pandemic, um, and how this is such a challenging decision for people to make is trying to, um, bring it to an analogy that people are more familiar with. So, um, you know, perhaps this isn't directly, um, towards the, the board members, but I So, you know, perhaps this isn't directly towards the, the board members, but I'd ask the board members or, or the public to think about snow days. And how is it that we decide, we as the collective we, or the Board of Ed, or Mike Cummings as the superintendent, decides to close the school for a snow day? And I think most people would understand that it is not a simple decision. You know, questions like, well, how much, how much snow needs to come before we close the school? What time does that decision have to be made? Who decides what decisions are made? What are other districts doing? What is the rest of the community doing? And these are just, and, and I don't make that decision. So I can't imagine how complex a decision like that is when it comes to something as quote unquote, "simple" as deciding to close the school for a day or two days when it's snowing. Now, I'm going to ask everyone to think about trying to make that decision if you've never seen snow, or if you never knew what snow was, or it's the first time you've ever experienced it. And you don't know how long it's going to snow. You don't know how much it's going to snow. You don't know, you know that the weather's changing constantly, but you don't know exactly what it's going to look like, and you're going to try to foresee, you know, project what it's going to look like and make plans accordingly. The quality of the snow is going to change, it's going to be ice, there are going to be different factors in terms of transportation. Then on top of that, all of a sudden, there's not enough gas in the community for your cars and the buses, there aren't enough shovels because everyone's looking for them, there's no oil, there's no oil delivery for, for people's homes or gas. And then all of a sudden, the heat's not working in the school or your home. So again, I, I think you, or, or hopefully you get where I'm going with this, is it's a very complicated decision. And then think about the fact that, you know what, it's not just snowing here in the Northeast, but it's snowing all over the country, it's snowing all over the world, and people are having to deal with these sorts of issues. So again, I, I, I think that hopefully puts it into a little bit of perspective and provides a little bit of an analogy into kind of what Mike Cummings and the Board of Ed and the administrators and teachers are all trying to contend with. It's as if you're living in a perpetual snow day decision. And every day, you need to figure out what the conditions are to make the decision to close a school or not, or to change a teaching model or not. It's a moving target, resources are changing constantly, needs are changing constantly, and therefore plans have to change constantly. So again, I'm not advocating for one thing or another, but I just try to give a little perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Yun, for that perspective. You just cut out, but thank you for that. Follow up from the board, or we can leave that great perspective, thank you for that. I see a few callers, both visually and virtually. Again, thank you, Dr. Yun, and thank you for your service to the town.
Yeah, and just so we know, I see a hand raised by someone who's already spoken. So if we want to just clarify the, the rules, Ms. Vitale, I, I do want to move on to other people, but if you could just clear whether we call on anybody more than once or they get their one chance.
Go ahead.
I mean, typically, we can only call on somebody once.
I see Jenaya Riley, who's a, a first time question asker, so perhaps at the end, if there's, if there is time, but I, I do see Ms. Riley.
She has been sent an unmute request and she is live.
Hi, how are you guys?
Thanks for calling in.
So I'm Jenaya Riley. My address is A 51 Duck Farm Road. Currently, I'm a high school student, a junior student at Fairfield Ludlow High School. Honestly, well, I wanted to touch base with the camera issue, but also I did have a question. Honestly, the whole situation with the cameras, there is kind of like a two-sided weight with it. But I've found in some way that it's been helpful for me to kind of like know who's talking. And so also, if a teacher calls on me or something like specifically, I can kind of be able to project myself like with the camera on. So teachers are very flexible with that. And you guys could probably, student, other students could say the same thing, too. They've been very flexible with like even assignments. I know if like, if I'm out or there's like something that came up and I can't entirely like finish that assignment at a certain time, I just tell my teacher and then they'll say, be really flexible with me. But I did have a question. The whole situation with like the education system, I absolutely love how we get taught at Ludlow High School, but I wanted to touch base in terms of if we can have some more of projection of like African American literacy and studies, I feel like we don't necessarily get taught enough about really the history behind all of it. And I just wanted to see if you guys had like any say on that.
Thank you very much for calling in with that comment and question. So anyone on the board want to respond? Ms. Leeper?
Thank you, Ms. Riley, for your comment. And I just want to reiterate that Superintendent Cummings has made a public commitment to embedding more anti-racism, anti-racism throughout the curriculum. And that is work that has begun, and it's multifaceted. It'll be both in the curriculum, it will be in teacher recruiting and retention, because I think what you said is exactly spot on. And I think Fairfield is fortunate to have a superintendent who has identified that need here in our community. And there's also the Fairfield, there's several, and some of our members are on this call tonight, but the Fairfield Equity Coalition, who has also been spearheading some of this work. And I'm not sure if you're a part of that organization or not, but it's, they've also been taking the lead and presented to us a week or two ago about some of their initiatives. So thank you for, for bringing up this topic.
Yeah, definitely, of course. We've been discussing it. I'm not entirely a part of like the coalition to hear about a lot of it based on the two clubs that I do. One is Unit Seven, then the other one that I hear a lot of it about is with the Equity Club at Ludlow.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for calling in and, and we appreciate the comments.
Can I just actually add one other thing, Ms. Leeper?
Yeah.
I might be saying what Mrs. Jacobson's about to say, but there's about to be a year-long course on African American and Hispanic history that the district will be rolling out. It's required by the state that all high schools have this course offering. And Mrs. Jacobson should really speak to it, because she sat on a panel, I believe, where they talked about how they were developing this curriculum. But that will be an additional offering coming, I think, next year.
Two years. Jacobson, would you like to follow up with just two years? Anything else to add?
No, it's just not, not for next year, but the year after is, is the year that it'll be available, most likely here in Fairfield. So I just, I'll give a plug to it that I've been following the development at the state level of the curriculum, and I'm just super excited. I'm kind of sad my next year senior girls won't have an opportunity, but that piece is critically important as well, and I think it's going to be an amazing offering in addition to the district. So that's coming as well. So thank you to Mrs. Leeper for that.
Jenaya, thank you for calling in. Kimberly, I see a hand raised, and Mr. Asa, I don't know if you see that same hand, of an actual hand.
I do, and I'm going to find her momentarily here, and a unmute request was sent. Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Hi there, I'm Kimberly Grant, and I'm at 315 South Pine Creek Road. Two things. The first, I have children at multiple levels, actually all four levels, preschool through high school. I hear a lot about the elementary school. My daughter goes every day. It seems like the sixth through 12th grade doesn't get spoken about as much. And so I'm just hoping that with the reopening committee, perhaps we can get a little bit better representation, or maybe I'm missing the representation on the committee. So maybe that could be spoken to if I'm incorrect there. But I think that would help those of us with older children who are struggling. So my, my next part, gosh, I get so nervous talking to people, I'm so sorry.
You're doing great. So good.
So one of the, one of the first meetings, Mr. Cummings made it very clear right off the bat that this is not a 2021 issue, it will be a 21 to 22 issue as well. And I understand and appreciate that. I understand and appreciate the need for remote learners and that we've offered Remote Learning Academy to them. I understand that Fairfield's one of the only, if not the only town to have created an entire academy. And I hear it's going great. I mean, people rave about it, so that's fantastic. I also know it's taken a lot from FPS teachers. The elementary schools lost the STEAM teachers to it. There's been a lot of funds. So as families are thinking about next year, private schools, this is when enrollment's happening, when families are thinking about, you know, do, do we move to a different town? Do we move to a different state? What are the thoughts regarding the Remote Learning Academy for the next two to five years? You know, parents are just thinking about the finances. You know, public school, private school, homeschool, which town to live in? I think they would like some guidance as to the thoughts on, you know, obviously, I think we'll still have remote learners next year, but what will, is Remote Learning Academy here to stay for how long?
Thank you for your question, and you did great. Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
Well, first, I just want to be very clear that we have not talked about that at the board table. We have received no information that the public is not aware of. So this is just me speaking. My bet would be that Remote Learning Academy wouldn't, would not happen next year, and it's only for this reason, because the elementary school teachers are now segueing, transitioning to doing live in their classroom. And there is no question that we have a lot more flexibility for movement if we can count on a set body of students in a classroom for whom that teacher is accountable, and whether they are remote or in, and that we can staff that accordingly. Once you have a teacher who is able to be on live with a student who is remote, you know, that's something we were not prepared to do at the start of this school year. Technically, professional development, that was not something that we could support and that we are gearing into supporting now. And that's a game changer in terms of what we look to offer next year. You know, and as for the STEAM teachers being pulled, well, they wouldn't be doing STEAM so much in the schools anyway. Not that they couldn't be an added resource for the science instruction, but I think it's great that they, they are, you know, being fully engaged in helping us to service all of our students of this year. So again, that, that's just, that's a very preliminary thought, because as I said, we have not talked about that. We have received no feedback on it. We don't know that it is a model going forward. But certainly, if, if it were simplified to have it just in the classroom, fully live and able to do it well, of course, I think that would, that would untie the hands of a central office and building administrators much more so. Just my view.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson, is your, is that a raised hand? Okay, you are up.
I'll just add a little bit more. So again, like Mrs. Maxon Cannelly said, there's been no discussion of this for next year, either at the state level. So if everyone recalls at the beginning in the summer when this came out, it was supposed to be a temporary option, not a even full year option. So now it is a full year option, and it is yet to be seen what the governor or the legislature does for fiscal year '22. I would hope, I understand that, you know, this is just me speaking, and my own opinion on that, is that this very large requirement was kind of dropped upon every district in this state to build a new airplane without any assistance, really, especially for districts like Fairfield, where we didn't really get a lot of CARES funding from the feds. So I would hope that if the state is going to now with more intention require something that they would be providing the resources for implementation to all districts.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale, is that your? Yes. Go ahead.
I would agree with my colleagues. We really, you know, have not discussed next year in depth, and I think the law has changed since the superintendent made those comments at the beginning of the year. You know, school has started, we have seen that there hasn't been the transmission in schools, so maybe the state guidance will change for the next school year. We also, you know, we've gotten a lot of good news over the last two weeks in terms of vaccine. That might also change the landscape, you know, over the next year. The upgrade for technology in our elementary schools, you know, if we do need to support some remote learning, we're in a better position now to do that. You know, I think that there's still, you know, concerns that we know, and parents that have elementary schoolers have shared, you know, that being in front of a screen is not ideal. So I think that we would still want to be supporting as much in classroom time as possible. You know, I think that we would do things differently. I think that we just need to prepare, be prepared for, you know, not business as usual come August, because we most likely are still, you know, going to be dealing with, hopefully, the tail end of this pandemic. You know, a lot of it, you know, kind of depends on us as individuals, you know, just how we react and control the transmission within the community, because that will make schools safer.
Mr. Asa?
And, and just to your point on the, the financial implication sides of everything we're doing, not just Remote Learning Academy, you know, just to note that we will be coming into budget season very shortly. Seems like we just finished that, but here we are again. So at that point, there, the superintendent will be presenting to the board plans moving forward for next year, and I'm sure he will be touching on a lot of this, again, not just Remote Learning Academy, but where are we going forward? So hopefully, we get some more information and guidance and hopefully relief financially. But again, budget season is coming, so this will be talked at, at length at the table.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Oh, I'm sorry, Kimberly, did you have a follow up?
No, I was just saying thank you. I think parents from remote learning and hybrid, you know, everything, I think everyone's kind of looking for that information. So thank you, but I'm sorry to cut you off, Ms. Gerber.
Ms. Gerber, we turn to you.
Just wanted to clarify that the budget will be presented to the board as of now at the January 12th Board of Ed meeting, and then there'll be subsequent discussions over the course of the month of January. But the budget, per past practice at least, and I guess I should put in the caveat that you never know based on what's going to happen between now and then, but every year I've been on the board, we've gotten the budget, the first meeting in January, and then we discuss it throughout the month of January. So as of now, January 12th will be when the 2122 budget will come out, will be presented by the superintendent, will be posted on the website for everyone to see.
Thank you for that. Any other quick comment from the board before Mr. Asa, I turn it back to you to call on another caller or virtual hand raiser?
Okay, so I'm not seeing any virtual hands raised in the queue at the moment. Just a reminder for anyone's on here that does want to talk. If you're on a laptop or a desktop, oh, I got one, so let me keep going now. Under Participants, you can hover over your name and click the virtual hand. If you're on a mobile device, I believe there's generally three buttons at the bottom that you can tap and raise your hand. So at the moment, I have a hand raised from Kristin Frame. I have sent an unmute request to you, which you can accept.
Kristin, are you there?
There she goes. Okay. We can hear you. Just state your name, name and address. Thanks.
Yep. Kristin Frame, 61 Lantern Road. I guess just, I, I appreciate this opportunity to talk. There's been a lot of really good questions asked, and just to, I guess, tag on to a couple concerns mentioned, I just, well, actually, I want to thank, thank Ms. Vitale for the update on the special meeting to review the learning models and, and Remote Wednesdays. I think that's great to hear. I think that's a positive. But I also want to just put in my plug for the concern about representation on middle school and high school. I do have two middle schoolers, and I think it would be wonderful to see some of that representation on the reopening committee. I think some of the perception out here is that, you know, the focus is on elementary exclusively. So it just seems like a gap. If we could, you know, address that, I think that would give a lot of confidence to the community. I just wanted to follow up on the live streaming. I know, I think it was Ms. Pitco that talked about that. I don't know if this is a I don't know if this is a, under your purview or not, but I I guess when I was reading the letters provided by the principals, the letter, we're at RLMs. The letter indicates like there's quite a bit of discretion, and that's what I've seen so far. You know, in the letter, it says instructional expectations at home, at home learning days, attendance check-ins will happen, great. But it talks about, you know, teachers will provide an overview of the day's assignment. Teachers will determine the best use of live time for each class period. And that could be check-ins, that could be instruction, that could be, and so I think still a lot of variability. I don't know that we can say confidently that we are live streaming. And I'm just curious if this is just a matter of, okay, we're letting teachers kind of get comfortable with the technology and it'll come? Or if, you know, it's going to continue to be variable? I I don't know that we're quite at the point where we can say we are live streaming, and I think that would be wonderful if we can get to that point.
Yeah, thank you. Is there, is anyone here in an echo? Okay, hopefully.
I muted Mrs. Frame. Sorry about that, Kristen, but we got an echo, so I had to mute you.
Would anyone from the board like to speak to the variability? Ms. Pitco and then Ms. Max and Cannelly.
Okay, so this quest, this was asked at the board table to Mike Cummings, and then I'm assuming the letters went out from the principals. Asked at the table, would all teachers grade six through 12 be live in their classes, attendance taken every period? Now, the teacher can decide what. So for instance, sometimes I'll give instruction for about 10 minutes. I'll let the students go work for a little bit, we'll come back together. It's very, I I haven't seen every letter that every principal has sent very clear that every student should be logging on every period, grade six through 12, attendance should be taken and instruction should be given. How they choose to give the instruction for that time period may vary.
Thank you, Ms. Max and Cannelly. Would you like to follow up?
Yeah, just additionally, I mean, anyone who's, I'm in a district where we've been live streaming against day one, but live streaming does not mean me in the front of the room talking at people for a 51-minute block. It's always involving, okay, breakout rooms. You can log off to do this activity. You can, you know, come back in 20 minutes sort of thing. All right, we're now going to do this writing exercise. You may, you know, log off for that. I mean, actually, to the to the high school students' points raised earlier, sometimes the Google Meet cannot stay engaged if you're trying to use these other applications or other functions. So they are all expected to be live, but I would say, I know we have heard of varying issues, and I'll be honest, especially at the middle school, more so than the high school, and I just can't stress enough the point that I think it was Mrs. Vitale said earlier of if you are perceiving that there has not been something relatively dramatically changed since that letter went out. Granted, giving it a few days, and I know November 23rd is supposed to come with some additional expectations, but please tell parents, anyone who says a complaint or whatever, not that the board isn't happy to receive those complaints, but it, the feedback needs to go to the principals. They need to go to the building leadership so that they know about it because, again, broadcast where you will, but it it could be that a parent is not fully understanding what the student was asked to do, or it could be that it hasn't been implemented with fidelity. And that feedback needs to go to the building so that there can be follow up at that level. And just to please make sure the buildings hear about any of the issues that you perceive and so that dialogue is started or continued.
Thank you, Ms. Max and Cannelly. Unless there's a, Ms. Rotelli? And then Ms. Vitale. You're on mute. Ms. Rotelli, you're on mute. If you could start at the beginning of your comment, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thanks, and thank you, Mrs. Frame, for your question. I just want to let you know that we, there is representation on the reopening committee for people of supportive of, you know, in six through 12. We have gotten a lot of feedback about the middle school in general, in in general, and the discrepancies there. We are talking about it. I know, I had asked at the last board meeting if there was going to be a minimum requirement with this new rollout that happened this week at the middle school. But what would that look like for a student, say, who hadn't had any live instruction yet this year as a as a middle schooler? So I I think there's still bugs to be worked out. I very much encourage everyone to bring their questions and concerns to the building principals. Just like Ms. Max and Cannelly said, it is very, very important that they hear about the issues or any concerns that you may be having. Feel free to email us as well, but it is very important that they hear it directly. And, you know, just to let you know, we're, we're asking the questions, we are, you know, pushing and trying to make sure that, you know, we we can, you know, tackle the issues and get things improved as soon as possible for all of our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale? Nope, you're on mute.
Just wanted to follow up on the, just the chain of command. You know, please, you know, if you have a problem, ideally, the student would advocate for, to the teacher directly, as a parent, teacher, building principal. I believe that the who to talk to, who to reach out to, went out with those letters that described the changes in the instructional model last week. And I would just encourage parents to to follow the chain of command because you're more likely to get the outcome you want sooner rather than later if you start closest to the student. That's all.
Thank you. So I see one caller with a hand up who's already had a chance to speak. I see Amy, who is live, and Carrie, who is?
Yeah, we've got, we've got Carrie Levy. We're going to go to her. Unmute request has been sent to Carrie. And in the meantime, if anyone is, hold on. Carrie, I just muted you. I'll unmute you again, but if there's anyone else that would like to speak, please use the virtual hand feature if you can. Under Participants, if you hover over your name, you can click on the hand icon and it will send us an alert. So Carrie, I'm sending you that unmute again.
Hi, great. This is Carrie Levy. Can you hear me?
Yes. If you could state your address for the record.
Sure, I'm 11 Colonial Drive.
Thank you.
Thanks. I really appreciate the opportunity to participate in this town hall. This is the the first time that I've participated in this, and I appreciate the meeting and it's been exciting. I have a question just in terms of the, going back to the reopening and and the plan and our decision-making process. I really appreciated the additional transparency that you provided in this meeting, as well as the plan that was posted on the website. And it was helpful to understand, you know, the decision-making that we did have things in place when we were initially thinking about opening the the elementary schools. My question is around how will we ultimately make the decision to go back full time? You know, I appreciated Dr. Yun's perspective. That was a useful analogy. I thought that was, you know, helpful to understand, you know, how complex this decision really is. And I understand that we have the guidance from the state in terms of following Addendum four, but I'm wondering, is is there a specific framework that our district in Fairfield that we're following in terms of being able to make that complex decision? You know, are we looking at specific metrics? Is it just focused on the positivity rate? Are we focused on mental health data? And maybe you addressed this, but I really would like to try to understand how we plan to make that decision, or is it just kind of, you know, we'll know it when we see it? Is it so judgmental that we can't describe what that framework is? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Thank you for that question about the multi-factors that go, the many factors that go into this. Can any of the boards speak to that for for Carrie? Ms. Vitale and then Ms. Max and Cannelly.
I think that the superintendent will start some of those discussions on when we have our special meeting or at least at the December 8th board meeting. I mean, I do think that there's going to need to be a change in some of the health data locally. I think that the health metrics that are, you know, laid out in Addendum four, specifically the positive case rate per 100,000, needs to be taken into consideration. You know, back to the quarantine, just as you increase the number of people in the building, if you do have a positive case, you know, you just end up having more students and staff potentially have to quarantine, and that could affect the operation of the building. But, you know, conversations that we've had, we're looking to increase the time in school, the district. We haven't seen plans yet, and I think that once we start moving to having students in buildings more and we see how that goes, we can, you know, take it one step at a time. I know that's probably not really answering your question specifically right now, but the decision is really multifaceted. The superintendent ultimately makes the decision, but it's not a decision that's made in isolation. There are conversations with the board, with, you know, public health officials at both the state level and at the local level, conversations with the town emergency team, you know, just the impact of opening schools, how, what that might have on the greater community. But it will be done, you know, we will try to be having more of these community conversations. The reopening committee has been discussing, you know, ways to engage the public in different venues. This is one, and I know a lot of people were frustrated that the superintendent and Mr. Cleary were not part of this discussion. You know, those who attended the webinars in the summer, so some of the challenges with that format. But I, I think that engaging stakeholders as we move forward, whether it be through webinars, more town halls, PTA meetings, focus groups, feedback through the reopening committee will be part of the path moving forward. Does that help at all?
And let's see if Jen, Ms. Max and Cannelly, did you want to add to that? And I, Ms. Rotelli, was your hand up?
I guess the only thing I would say is that I do think that Mrs. Vitale ended up moving a little bit away from the question and because she has very, very much big picture in mind. The simple answer to your question is no, there is not one single metric, and no, there is no metric, metrics that have been published that you have missed out on. It is a complicated mix. Mrs. Vitale just explained it, and I don't need to repeat it. I first, I think we should be taking a much more narrow view of what we do in opening as we also factor in the mitigating, you know, strategies that we're using, but I don't have anything else to add.
Ms. Rotelli, did you want to comment?
Thanks. I, I just want to acknowledge the frustration that parents have. I know they're looking for a number, and I get it because, you know, we didn't go full in person when our number was at like a 1.2 in the summertime. And I think they they're looking at this after all of, sorry, after all of these months, saying, you know, well, what, like, what now? Now that, you know, the cases are rising and clearly we're not going full in person anytime soon because of the cases arising? What, like, when we, when the curve starts to come back down again, like, is there a magic number there that's going to make it okay for in person? Because it wasn't okay when we were at that number before. So I get it. I totally get it. It's frustrated me since the summertime when I wanted kids back in school, full in person, the first day of school. I do think there's, you know, obviously, a culmination of lots of different things that go into this decision, and it's not easy. So I just want to acknowledge that for all the parents out there, you know, and and say I I get it and I'm equally as frustrated.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
So thank you to my fellow board members for their comments. I'm not reiterating those, but I'll echo their comments. But I will also add a piece that, you know, I would hope that, you know, I think everyone's aware that we have our guidance and those different kind of numbers and considerations to look at, you know, and and every state has a different piece of paper. So, you know, every state has a different number. So I I'm hopeful that at this point, it seems to be that there is some learning happening and that there could be some transition in that guidance and as people learn more. And, you know, what we didn't know, as Mrs. Vitale stated earlier, back in March, we didn't know in July, and now there's a little bit more. So in addition to everything that they said, I I would hope that we would be looking to state leadership as well to do some reflection on what they know and to be updating guidance as well to help us along here.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Any other brief comment from the board? Carrie, thank you for your question. Mr. Asa, is there anyone who is up?
So we have one virtual hand from someone who's already spoken. So just panning the audience, I see Amy Rugiro. Let me try and find you here and unmute you. And in the meantime, I just want to say we're hitting about the 10:30 hour. So we have a potential 30 minutes left here. So if there is anyone that wants to speak tonight before 11, please get in the queue and use the participants box to raise your hand. That most of you are, video is muted, so I can't see you. So if you do want to raise your hand and you can't do it virtually, please turn your video on so I can see you because we don't want anybody left out while we still have time. So Amy, you are getting a unmute request now.
And if I could add, Mr. Asa, that any questions, not only as they pertain to the school reopening plans, but facilities broadly, finances, programming, programs as well, that's on the agenda. So do not be shy if your question is not about school reopening, but one of those other topics.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Amy Rugiro. I live at 329 Greenville Toll Road. I have a child that's in the high school and sophomore at Ludlow and Dwight, fifth grader. And I guess I could follow up to Bonnie Rotelli's statement that she just made about frustration from parents because I'm one of them. I've never really been involved in anything with the school or the board other than being a parent involved in the classroom and lots of, you know, activities, but a voice in the community that you guys have never heard from, putting the trust in the board. What I'd like to understand, I guess, and I'm still not understanding, is, and I know you said that there's no point on looking back and what happened when we opened schools or didn't open the schools full time. However, I guess I would disagree with that because I'd like to understand or at least to learn from what happened when we could have gone back to school in September and, you know, really understand why we didn't? And how do we keep from making that mistake again when the numbers go down? So that, I guess, is one of my frustrations. Also, with the November 9th date, that's when you guys started hearing from me, it seemed like, you know, we were planning to go back and that was quickly taken from us as one of these parents that was really counting on a date and, you know, having some end in sight, where, you know, it was taken from us because the rates went up. But it doesn't seem like we were ever ready to go back. So again, that's another frustration I have. And then we did this survey, and, you know, I think the number was like, I heard 88%, I heard 93%. We're talking about people with comments and 50% that wrote comments in, you know, said that they, you know, you know, would like to keep the hybrid model, but I just would like to know, why don't we just send another survey? Because there's a lot of divide in the community, and obviously, I've been outspoken on this issue with not going to full-time school because I'm one of these parents that, you know, is very stressed with a child with ADHD and, you know, a single mom, and it's very stressful, and I feel like we're falling behind from, you know, other towns and private schools. And at this point, I guess if there's no guidance or you can't give us any color on when we're returning, then just tell us so that I could do, like, consider moving or putting my son in private school or making other sacrifices because or making other sacrifices, because I don't like the divide in the community. I don't like the personal insults. And I feel like there's not a leadership here that's helping us come to some sort of conclusion. And it seems like there's a lot of board members that are speaking out and really supportive of going back full-time, which I greatly appreciate, but there also seems to be a big divide with, you know, the leadership that's not supportive of it, and driving that decision, which is extraordinarily frustrating to me. So I'd like to understand that.
Yeah, thank you for your comment and for calling in. Mr. Peterson, did you want to address Ms. Rugiro?
Yes, thanks. Thanks. I can, I'll, I'll give you my perspective on a couple of the points you raised. You know, one of the things that I've been thinking about with some other parents in this call who have talked about September, I think an important point to remember about September is we knew less then than we know now about how coronavirus would spread in a densely packed student environment. You know, even in the summer, obviously, there was, there was a sense that, you know, children were less susceptible, and we were going to have masks. We didn't know what compliance was going to look like, for example. And we have a much better view of that now. I, I think that that's something that obviously will be taken into account in any, in any future decision. You know, so, I mean, talking about why we didn't go back in September, it was, it was a different time. I would have preferred to go back in September. I understood where the administration was coming from, and their, their desire to, to take measured steps back toward full-time. You know, I, I think your, your question about whether there will never be a specific date, I, the one thing that I think that we have all said at the table is that we're watching the health data very, very carefully. And, and we don't know where the health data will go. And the health data has to be the bottom-line driver of a lot of our decisions, or at least a lot of our thinking about our decisions. So it, I, I understand that it's frustrating. And I, you know, I, I have my own views about what the administration might want to do. I also respect that, you know, my Cummings is the only one who is, is, you know, in, you know, juggling all the balls at once. And I think the more that we can listen to parents, try to advocate for our parents, try to, you know, amplify voices that we think that the administration needs to hear. That's a role that we have as members of the board. That's something I'll continue doing, but I really, I don't like the divisive tone either. I would like to do everything in partnership and in collaboration. So I've tried to do that from the beginning, and I guess I'll leave it there. Let's see if anyone else wants to comment.
Thank you. Mr. Asa, then Ms. Jacobson.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff just said a lot very well. I'm not going to reiterate the past, but it, you know, in September, there were also some things as far as that that did come up, that was a big complication, was the unmasked time, most notably at lunch. So that was a big, big area that honestly, we, the administration didn't know. And, and there wasn't really clear guidance. There wasn't clear health experts telling us. I mean, there was people saying six feet, people saying three feet. They did what they thought was in the best interest of, of the kids and, and the staff and the, and the community. As far, I just want to touch on one thing what you say about surveys. So I agree with the divisiveness, but I worry that, that surveys, you know, could cause even more of that. And and I don't want this to come off the wrong way, but ultimately, it's the, it's the administration, it's the educators that are the ones in this business that, that should know best. And as board members, we all have different perspectives that we bring to the table, and some of us are educators, some of us are business people, they're all different people. But what I think Mr. Cummings has made clear is that while he does, and I think it's, it's unmistakably that he does listen to everybody, because he literally, the man literally returns every email, which I can say, I, I don't have time to do that all the time, but he literally does. I mean, he's, he's religious about that. But he does listen to everybody, but he's not going to take, you know, if there's a survey done that more than half the people want this method, he's going to make a decision based on what is in the best educational interest of the child, while also considering the other factors that we've talked about tonight, and we've been talking about for nine months. So I just wanted to touch on that. That's my feeling on, you know, over-surveying.
Ms. Jacobson, did you want to make a follow-up comment? So I got you up next, and then Ms. Vitale, turn to you.
Hi, thanks so much for calling in, and I do understand the frustration, and I get it. Because as much as the comments are from my fellow board members, there is another side to that, that all of that was also the same in other districts, and they did make a different choice. So I understand the perspective of saying, well, yeah, well, that's all true in Greenwich and Bridgeport as well. So yeah, different leadership made different choices. That is what happened, given the special circumstances of their district, and as has been reiterated multiple times this evening, there are certain circumstances that are different with higher opt-out rates, or different issues with buildings. So those are, those are valid as well. So it's not so simple as to say others did it. So I do, I do absolutely understand the frustration. And I think that, as Finn said, that we're going to be looking at things differently come soon here, probably. Hopefully, that guidance has changed. But I just wanted to say that, you know, there is another side that I get, that other people did make other choices, and other leadership did make other choices. So that is a valid point, and I know, I hear that, and I know we all do, and, and feel it every day, too.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale?
Yeah, thank you for those comments. And, um, believe me, I understand the frustration, and I understand, you know, especially when you look at what other districts are doing. And I apologize for some of my, you know, rambling answers, but as board chair, I've been, you know, living and breathing this really since February, and have been involved in a lot of conversations with a lot of different people that you really need to look at it holistically. If you want to go back to August, there was concerns about the heat, there was concerns about ventilation, you know, with 11 elementary schools, and not all of them being equitable in terms of that, not knowing what the mask compliance was going to be like. At that point, you know, we still really weren't sure about how it was transmitted, you know, over the last few months. It seems that it's less by touch and more, you know, in the air. So we really wanted to see how, what the impact would be for bringing kids back. Would it transmit in schools? Would it, would it cause increased transmission within the community? When we looked at it at the end of September, if you watched that board meeting, Mr. Cleary came and said to give it two more weeks, just to get the data, to see what the impact of schools was. Unfortunately, the health data for those two weeks was not favorable for us. Two weeks after that, it wasn't favorable for the county. And now I think we all know where we are right now. We, and I tell you this, that we are working, and the district is working, to bring kids back as soon as possible, as safely as possible. And as you've listened to our board meetings, you know, different board members are going to have different feelings about how quickly that should happen, and we may not always agree. But I think that we are all, you know, united and hearing your concerns for those that want their kids back ASAP, as well as the concerns of those families that are comfortable in the hybrid or in full remote. You know, trying to to listen to everybody, and trusting, trusting our administrator and our educators, who are really the boots on the ground, and in conversations with public health officials, education officials at the state level, other superintendents, who are constantly in communication with each other, and, you know, seeing what's working and what's not, and town leaders.
So thank you, unless, Ms. Jacobson, you have something that's real quick as a follow-up before we move on, because if 11 is the North Star here, go ahead and for a quick comment.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted, I had another point that I didn't say, and I just want to also remind everyone, and I don't want to go open a rabbit hole at this point on this, but Fairfield is also somewhat unique in that we have two universities, and absolutely, that is impacting our numbers. So that is something that is not in every other district. And so just putting that out there, that is a consideration that we have to contend with.
Thank you. Mr. Asa, as I said, if 11 o'clock is that North Star, it looks like we have time for a couple more questions.
And I just, I got an email from a couple people. Thank you for the feedback. Apparently, some people are clicking on the hand, and it's not showing up. So one way to fix that is to come off video mute, and if you can, if anybody wants to speak, I don't see any other hands that haven't spoken yet, please come off video mute, turn on your video, and I'll be able to see you, and you can just give us a wave. We can give that a few seconds for people to
A final reminder is if, if you are planning to make some comments or ask a question, to be considerate. This is up now on 10:40. I think we are all tired, and yet we want to make sure that there's an opportunity to hear from you. So if you could be concise and thoughtful in your comments and the responses to the board.
I'm not seeing anyone else coming off of video mute.
I see two, one on video and one by a hand. Both have had an opportunity to speak, so maybe one last call. If we could, for anyone that is interested that has not yet spoken, this will be the final call, if I can be so bold.
Yeah, and just, just an apology, if the technology is not working for someone that wanted to speak, please know that we did run a couple trials of this in the last week, trying to work out all the kinks. Again, this is our first time doing a virtual town hall with virtual hand raising, et cetera. So I think all in all, it's gone pretty well. But for those of you that may not have gotten to speak and wanted to because of a technology issue, I do apologize for that. Everybody does know, please, that you can email the board at the BOE members email, and also at the public comment email that's on the agendas. We do see all of these emails, and they're all received. So Nancy, I'm not seeing any other virtual hands or anyone else coming off of video.
So with that, I did see two hands. If they're a quick, because you've already had an opportunity to speak, if it's a quick follow-up or a quick comment, Kimberly and Donna, and then we can leave it at that.
Okay, uh, let's see. Donna.
As long as it's a follow-up, if we could be mindful of the fact that it is very late and long. So if it's a quick question, Donna, I see you waving us off. Thank you for the consideration. Kimberly, did you want to make a quick follow-up comment? Okay, so.
I sent her a request to unmute. There we go.
Kim Grant, 315 South Pine Creek. Just, I was texting with somebody that was asking earlier, and echo, kick them off. One of the questions some people had was, are we stuck with staffing? If a lot more teachers get quarantined, are we going to be shut down because we don't have staff? Many know, I put out there on social media, you know, apply to be a sub, but there's a lot of us out there that were teachers and are now stay-at-home parents. There's a lot of parents that are homeworking. Where are we at with that? Are we using central office? You know, this is a good opportunity for people that haven't been in the classroom in a long time, do.
Get a quick follow-up response on that before, as a final, any, Jen, Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Um, that's absolutely a reality we could face at some point, Kimberly. It's, you know, we haven't yet, and thank goodness, we've been able to, between taking all hands on deck and putting them into classroom for subs, but is it possible that, you know, a community spread could lead to enough people having to be quarantined that we have to close a school? Yes, that could happen.
Okay, well, thank you. Before I turn it over to the board, in case you have any last quick comments, I want to thank the community for participating in a civil and open and thoughtful discussion, and asking your questions. I hope you feel heard, and thank you so much to the, this volunteer board of education for all the work that you do. And I turn it over to you. Is there any last comment or question or concern or bit of nugget from the board? Ms. Jacobson?
I just wanted to thank you to you, Nancy, actually, for moderating tonight and helping us this evening. Thank you so much. And to Mr. Asa, bow down on the technology tonight. Thank you so much for managing that. Like, I know it probably was stressful. So I appreciate you both. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment? So I, I will say goodnight and thank you, and I turn it back to you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Selectwoman Lefkowitz, for being a wonderful moderator. It was so nice spending the last few hours with you.
Be careful to duke it out, who
I'm going to tell Mr. Dewitt, you know, who was our last moderator, that, you know, you know, you did him proud.
Excellent.
Thanks, with, you know, his, his advice to you. So thank you, Nancy, really. It meant a lot having you here. We appreciate your, your support. Thank you to the public who, who tuned in. It was enjoyable seeing you and having this conversation. We look forward to the next one. I want to wish everybody a very, very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. You know, I know it's going to be a little bit different this year, but even in the midst of this, we have a lot to be thankful for. Mr. Asa, thank you for all the work that you did to make this happen. I appreciate it. You know that if I handled the tech, it would not be going as well.
Just one, one quick note on the, on the tech. For the public, we only have 55 people left on here. But if there's any question, this video is being recorded and will be turned over to Fair TV to be posted in a format that can be replayed. So in case there's any question out there, that there will be a copy of, an audio copy of this recording.
Thank you. And thank you to Marco and Andrea for helping, central office staff for helping make this happen. I think overall, it was well done. And with that, kind of a motion to adjourn. Mr. Asa, second by Mrs. Gerber, all in favor? We adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.